I'm your guest.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, good evening, everybody. We are now going to reconvene this public hearing of June 29th, sorry, reconvened from June 28th, 2022. And so I'll now be calling this meeting to order. This meeting is convened by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating electronically, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance with section 14.13 of the procedure by law, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. Any council member whose video is disabled will be marked absent for that portion of the meeting. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact info has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by at Ben City Clerk. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wautuths people. We thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff, who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence from six to eight this evening. Councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Present.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb. Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly is Deputy Mayor, sitting in the chair, and Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting, the hearing has quorum. Chair Bly.
And thank you very much. So before we begin, I have some announcements. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council, or speaking in person. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Ben City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments or agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearingcomments. This link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak and only if those being represented confirm they are also on the line or in person and must not be speakers themselves. Council is committed to ensuring that all people who participate in Vancouver's public hearings are treated fairly and respectfully. The language we all use in public hearing should reflect respect for all residents. No form of discrimination is acceptable or tolerated. Discriminatory language includes attacks on groups of people and individuals. Vancouver's procedure by law prohibits council members from the use of words, tone, speakers, or gestures that expresses a negative view of the character of any person or groups of people. Members of the public are expected to not engage in improper conduct, which includes the use of expressions that promote hatred or are defamatory. The creation of a safe and inclusive environment for the public, safe staff, and council to participate is all of our responsibility. Members of council may call a point of order if language used by another councillor during a meeting is not respectful. As Chair, I will ask the speaker to modify their speech to ensure they are using respectful language. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, given the number of speakers on item three, council, I am seeking a motion that the public hearing reconvene tomorrow, June 29th, 2022, at 3:00 PM instead of the scheduled 6:00 PM start in order to continue hearing from speakers.
Chair, I'm happy to move that motion.
That being seconded. Okay, thank you very much. So I heard motions moved by Councillor Kirby Young and seconded by Councillor Boyle. All those in favor?
Why?
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that motion passes. So, yesterday we heard staffs and the applicants opening comments, asked questions of staff and the applicant, and began hearing from speakers, and we will now continue to hear from the public. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber? Please come forward to the podium at that time. We have speakers on the line to provide comments on this item. Yesterday, we ended with speaker number seven, so we will continue with speaker number eight, Michael O'Shaughnessy. Clerk is speaker number eight on the line.
Chair, Chair Bly, it's Paul Mokry here, City Manager. Before we start with speakers, if I might, request an opportunity just to update council. There were some questions asked yesterday, procedural questions around questions from council on this matter and the extent of appropriate questioning from council about the application to the applicants. And we provided, staff provided some information yesterday, and I think at the end of the day, there was probably not complete clarity on that issue. So I've asked Jeff Greenberg from our Law Department to just confirm, again, the appropriate scope of council questioning in the context of this particular public hearing. So if I might take the opportunity to ask Jeff to just brief council on that, that would be appreciated.
Yes, thank you, Paul. It's Jeff Greenberg, Assistant Director of Legal Services, and I'm just going to provide some additional clarification and guidance around the scope and the breadth of the questions. As you know, from the multitude of public hearings that you've had over the past four years, it is, of course, open to council and the public to talk about any of the matters which are set forth in the rezoning by law. So that would generally be the height, the density, the form of development, and any other specific provisions that you would see in your draft rezoning by law, which would be part of your package. However, in addition to that, for the greater clarity, it's also free for council and the public to ask questions and to speak about the overall rezoning project and any of the conditions of the rezoning, which are generally set out in Appendix B of the referral report, the rezoning report. And there are a multitude of conditions which you are also very familiar with from all of the rezonings that you have experienced. In this particular case, one of the rezoning conditions is a housing agreement. And therefore, because it is a rezoning condition, it is open to council to ask questions about that housing agreement and the terms and conditions which are set forth in Appendix B. The housing agreement, as you will see, talks about an affordability mix, supportive housing, et cetera, all of which is outlined in the report, all of which then is able to be discussed by council and to be spoken about by the speakers. In addition to the housing agreement, as is normally the case, there are issues in relation to transportation and parking and landscaping and engineering conditions and shadow impacts, all of which is, again, free for you to ask questions about and free for the public to speak about. What this rezoning is not asking you to do is to essentially approve the specific tenants. But it is, however, asking you to look at the social housing and the supportive housing and the affordability mix of the housing which is proposed for this site. And therefore, questions in that regard are also totally applicable and open for you to ask. So I just wanted to give you that clarification and the public that clarification so that everyone is operating on an even playing field in terms of what they can and cannot discuss and ask. So I hope that was helpful to you, and of course, I'm available for the evening if you have any questions.
Chair, I have a follow-up point of procedure on that. I put myself on the queue, if I might.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge, Jeff, thank you very much for that update. Councillor Kirby Young, questions? Is it of? Well, go ahead and answer your question.
It's a procedural question for you, which you may wish to direct to law. I'll look for your guidance on that. And yesterday, there were a number of questions that council were, how may I say, dissuaded or precluded from asking. I think we've got clarity now in hearing this from law. And I'm particularly thinking with respect to the applicant and the applicant's presenters. And there's normally only one opportunity to ask questions of the applicant per the public hearing guideline. So I'm wondering, given that we have this clarification from Legal Now, if council will have an opportunity to ask an additional round of questions from the applicant, given that that was, I think, short-changed yesterday, and we're hearing clearly that some of those questions could have been in scope, fairly.
Okay, I appreciate that, Councillor Kirby Young. If it would satisfy your point of procedure, can I consult with clerks while we hear from speakers and also recognizing that the mayor was chairing that portion of the meeting? And we'll be back in this meeting in a couple of hours and given that he was chairing just to confer with the mayor as well and then come back with a decision so we know how to move forward?
Yeah, I would be happy for you to clarify and follow up with Legal. I would actually appreciate, just to be clear on my request, that 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 response and that answer comes directly from Legal? That would be my request, specifically from staff.
Yep, I appreciate that. That's very clear. So I'll make sure I circle back on that. In a timely manner. Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Kirby Young, and thank you to our legal staff and to City Manager for flagging that for us. So with that, I will move us back to the speaker's list and we will be calling on speaker number eight, Michael O'Shaughnessy.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have five minutes. Please, go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, councillors. My name is Michael O'Shaughnessy, as you just heard. I live in Vancouver and I'm here tonight to speak in support of this project. The effects of Vancouver's housing shortage are literally visible for all to see. Vancouver is in the grip of not just a housing crisis, but a homelessness crisis. And that homelessness crisis is concentrated. Right now, our model segregates the city by income. It creates pockets of poverty that you can see in health data. People in the downtown east side live decades fewer than those in the west side. It is our city's shame. The project before you tonight is one way we can begin to end that shame and begin to build a city that is more just, more equal, and a home for all of its citizens. Once built, 129 people will call this building home, in a place that is far from a pocket of concentrated poverty. They will have individual units, each of which is equipped with its own separate washroom and kitchen. Functionally, a studio apartment, frankly, similar to one I lived in for many years. The building would also include a common laundry area, a dining area, a program space, and an underground parquet. Only about half of these units will be supportive housing. The remainder will be very deeply affordable housing for residents who are able to live more independently. The building which these people will call home will displace no one. It will be built on publicly owned land, near public transit, the Arbutus Greenway and parks, all of which unhoused and underhoused people, as our fellow citizens, are fully entitled to use and enjoy. This is consistent with the Broadway Plan, which you have just approved. This is also consistent with the city's climate goals. And from my perspective, it will be consistent with basic human rights. This building will be a warm, safe, and dignified place for people to get back on their feet, with supports in place to give residents the best possible shot at building a better life. Tonight and, you know, in the coming nights, I suspect you will hear that this project proposes to warehouse people. You will perhaps hear that you're bringing dangerous people near schools. You may hear that a theoretical model might have superior outcomes. Councillors, the housing and homelessness crisis are not abstract and not theoretical. They're concrete. Every day, 2,000 people sleep on the streets of Vancouver, in the age of exploitation, abuse, and violence. We cannot scrap this. We cannot go back to the drawing board, because while we're drawing, people are dying. If you vote down this project, 129 people will not get the theoretical alternatives. They'll get the street. No matter how good your job might be, or no matter how secure you might feel, none of us are far from the street. An economic calamity can strike anyone at any time. Anyone can fall prey, me, anyone else, to a long spell of unemployment, or eviction, or in some cases, addiction. I have some cases like this in my immediate family. In those cases, the individuals are able to lean on family supports. Some people have no such supports. Those people end up on the street. One day, one of those people could be you or me. No matter their housing status, no matter their risk status, the people who will live here are our neighbours and fellow citizens. We have a duty of care to them as members of our community to extend a helping hand, a real, concrete helping hand with funding secured and land acquired, not a theoretical solution that may or may not be delivered. I want to end my remarks tonight with a comment on this process. I believe that this hearing on a single building has more speakers signed up than were signed up for the Broadway Plan. It has faced concentrated, well-funded opposition, including a microsite, a proactive media relations campaign, and direct mail advertising. None of that comes for free. Housing is a human right, but this process with hundreds of speakers over dozens of hours puts that human right on trial and forces supporters to run a gauntlet. Is this the kind of city we want to be? I submit that it is not. This building has land and funding secured. We will build safe, warm, secure, and supportive, and deeply affordable housing. Councillors, I urge you to vote in support. Your constituents, the citizens of Vancouver, many of whom will call this building home, deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, so we'll be moving to the next caller. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number 10, Colin Sharp.
Hi, hey there, folks. Thanks for taking the time to hear from me. So my name is Colin Sharp, and for six and a half years, I've lived at 2020 West 8th, which is just half a block from the proposed project site, and I wholeheartedly support it. My reason for supporting this project is not only the desperate need for housing in the city, a need that I believe has been pretty well documented throughout the process and is generally accepted even by opponents of this specific project. But I also support this because this exact location is absolutely ideal for a project like this. For residents of the building, they'll have their easy access to transit, essentials, and more in what is becoming one of the new courts of the city, and that will do so much to support their transition to more stable lives. Plus, there's all those specifics around the available funding and the land itself that can make this location possible. So those are the most important reasons to support this project, and it's been covered well already by presentations from the applicant yesterday, from other calls, Srida yesterday, Michael just before me. So I wanted to speak about how we react and listen to those that are opposed to this project. So I live here, and other people that live in the area are concerned about the impact this project will have on their current lives. I understand, like, you think about changes that are coming. ... and make a transformational difference in the lives of people in this city. I would hate to see this project not go forward because people are opposed to change, even though big, exciting changes are already coming to our neighbourhood. Thanks for your time, and that's the end of my remarks.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but we appreciate you coming. We'll be moving to the next speaker. Next, we have speaker number 11, who is in person, Sandra Ho.
Thank you. I have slides.
Okay, we'll just give our clerks a second to pull those up. And I see that they are up, so you're free to start.
Good evening, Chair Bly and council. My name is Sandra. My family and I have lived in Kitsellano for 15 years. I oppose this rezoning. We settled in Kitsellano because it felt like home and was an inclusive neighbourhood. We are surrounded by many types of social housing, housing that works. This has been a long year for me, trying to learn about this project and the true intentions of this proposed building. Why was community feedback ignored with 80% of neighbours opposed to the proposal? I have seen the divisive hatred on social media spewed by supposed housing and drug policy advocates. As an Asian woman, this has made me and others feel bullied and threatened for speaking up for our neighbourhood. There are 100 problems with this proposal, but I will speak to ones that trouble me the most. First, during UDP, the only site selection consideration was that it was next to a transit station and that city land was available. The site selection failed to consider it was 20 metres from a school, a toddler's park, including a women's supportive recovery home. The site is also too narrow and impacts the Arbutus sidewalk and safety. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. First, you have seen that the shadow impacts are quite significant on the school in the mornings and the park in the afternoons. Next slide, please. When children need sunshine for development. Shadow impacts are important considerations to urban planning, or why bother doing them at all? Next slide, please. The Broadway Plan initially discriminated against independent schools with solar access protections only offered to public schools and parks. Fortunately, Councillor Dominado addressed that, who said kids are kids to mean all kids being equal. I ask you to remember this when considering this rezoning and site impacting 500 children and potentially hundreds of adults every day. No one is debating the need for housing, but this building is not suitable for the neighbourhood. It's too big for the site. Next slide, please. This vacant lot has a lush wooded green space with tall tree canopy. We need more green space along the Broadway corridor, not less. Removal of this runs counter to the global climate crisis, and most important, it is destroying a part of our community that brings peace to people and is a cooling space in the summers and connection to neighbours. It's important to note that referral report states that Appendix B, that a minimum of 50% of tenants will be at the shelter rate of income assistance, which means that could creep up to 100% at any time in the future without recourse because BC Housing and Minister E.B. has moved on. If there was such an urgency to build a housing facility, they could have built a six-story building a year ago without going through the lengthy rezoning process. Minister E.B., my MLA, continues to state things will work themselves out. The data shows he is being untruthful. He forced a lease extension on Penticton. The Maple Ridge housing had people dying inside. And in Olympic Village at Marguerite Ford, 855 emergency 911 calls were made from the past two years. That's 10 years after it opened. It has not settled down. Another nonprofit operator declined to bid on this project. They thought the size was too big and saw serious design issues with the building that would not enable them to run it successfully. Dr Julian Summers says that large congregant housing like this tower does not work. It does not improve function and recovery. Others will say supportive housing saves lives, but in fact, 50% of drug overdose deaths occur in single-room-only supportive housing. Many who are in supportive housing speak of the horrible conditions they must face and are afraid to speak at this public hearing for fear of losing their housing, despite them having serious concerns about their own housing. It's sad. Dr Summers shows scattered individual housing, where one has choice independence to live with dignity, is the best model of housing. I want people to have healthy and successful integration into our neighbourhood. Please. The fact is, council, if you support this proposal, even if you are well-intentioned, you are simply you are simply saying yes to a failed model. We need a model that works with this neighbourhood. This model should not exist anywhere. So please, make BC Housing go back, this time with the neighbourhood. Together, we can find a housing that works. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but we do appreciate you coming to speak in person today.
Thank you.
Next, we have...
Point of privilege, Chair. Would it be possible... Would it be possible to get the PowerPoint presentation from the speaker? I just noted, wanted to make sure that we were able, we and council were able to have the PowerPoints that were brought along by speakers.
Okay, no problem. Well, it is, of course, the clerks do have it, so it's within their ability to distribute to councils. So clerks, if you could distribute that presentation, that would be great.
And similarly, I don't want to ask every time, and I know that there was in the last public hearing as well, so just as a matter of practice, appreciate having them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. That's a good point. So I trust that clerks have heard that. So thank you. And next, we have speaker number 12, Lisa Belasomo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and councillors. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a Vancouver resident and am calling to oppose the rezoning application at West Seventh Avenue and Arbutus in its current form. My family and I lived in this neighbourhood for almost 10 years. We picked this place because it felt like home. It was about as mixed a community as you could find anywhere in the city, and that's exactly what we wanted. And we learned early on that our neighbourhood was home to more than 1,000 social and supportive housing units, and those people and families are our neighbours too. And that housing works because it's the right size and the right model. But the project in front of you at City Hall fails the people who might live there, and it certainly fails those of us who already live, work, and play here. The work with Dr Julian Summers from Simon Fraser University made it clear, the housing model that BC Housing and the province have come to accept does not work. Forcing people with mental health and additions into a single building and leaving them to fend for themselves does not work. I know that's probably hard to hear, particularly since that's been the model in BC and in our downtown east side for decades. I know it's hard to see past that, but it's the truth. If the current model worked, the downtown east side would be heaven. Instead, it's a living hell, and it's getting worse. And every single Vancouverite knows that, and each one of us knows we can and must do better. The people BC Housing wants to help, and the people who live here now, all deserve better. But it looks like the province and BC Housing aren't listening. They keep doing the same thing over and over again and watch it fail. They fail to connect with communities, and they put anyone who disagrees on the sidelines. So all of us who are opposed to this project in its current form are counting on each of you, councillor. We elected you to represent us, and we speak up and to speak up for us, even when it makes the provincial government uncomfortable. You're going to hear people calling those of us who are opposed "nimby's". That is so far from the truth, and it's an old and tired argument that's used to shut down those people with real and serious concerns. We're asking that the model be changed. This is a family neighbourhood with hundreds of millions of dollars in family infrastructure amenities. It's designed and built and ready for families. And there are families, lots of them, who need housing. Single mums, for instance, is a group we seldom hear about, but they are there, and this could be a place for them. What's being proposed comes with no services except an injection site, and the vague promises of Minister Eb do nothing to alleviate our concerns. Those of us who oppose this model see it does not work. Every Vancouverite sees that, except the province and BC Housing. And when David Eb tries to pretend that things work themselves out and things settle down over time, he's being untruthful. Just look at the numbers and the police data. Things do not settle down. They do not get better. The fact is, BC Housing and the province build the building, place the people, and then they leave. They leave the people living in the building to fend for themselves, and then leaves the neighbourhood to struggle to pick up the pieces. Meanwhile, BC Housing and the minister have moved on. The fact is, if you support this proposal, even if you're well-intentioned, you're simply saying yes to a model that is failed, a model that does not work for the people living there, and a model that does not work or fit this family neighbourhood. Please make BC Housing go back to the drawing board, this time with the community. Together, we can find a model that works. When you see the failure of this model right across our city, please stand up and say no. Say no, because together, we can do better. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much. There are no questions. Thank you for calling in.
Thanks.
I'm just going to pause us for a moment there. Councillor Hardwick, in response to your question regarding the presentations, if the presentations are circulated to councillors, they also, it also needs to be posted publicly. So how, what would be best is if you do go on the queue, if you'd like the presentation shared, so that you could ask the speaker if that, if they're comfortable with that, and if they agree, then we can share it around.
I see. And what can we do retroactively to the last public hearing?
Um, let me just check with the clerks on that, just a moment. That is difficult to do, councillor Hardwick, because we're not too actively, proactively engaged with the public, and so unfortunately, if it wasn't asked when the first seven speakers spoke, it wouldn't be appropriate to go back and ask them to share information at this point. So we'll have to just commit to doing it going forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and you are welcome. So we will move on to speaker number 13, Bree Graham.
Hi, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm here to express my deep support for this proposal. I'm a renter in Kitsellano, and I live down the street from the site. I also have firsthand experience caring for family members who have accessed supportive housing models quite like this, and that housing has likely saved their life. I've heard fears expressed based in stigma and assumption. These fears are only fears, they're not fact. The tenants who would access this building are not anonymous statistics, they're individuals who have people that love and care deeply about them. The fact is that all sorts of people access supportive housing: young people, LGBTQ2A+ communities, seniors, people with disabilities, and so many more. Counselors, the purpose of this public hearing is to focus on the design and the rezoning of the site. The design of the building is well-suited to the neighbourhood and the density that will come with the new Arbutus Skytrain Station. Its location near key transit routes will benefit future tenants. You've heard from staff that the site also fits within existing city policies and commitments. With regards to the concern around its proximity to a private Catholic school, the majority of housing in Vancouver is inherently near parks and schools, because we design our cities to include parks and schools. In fact, the majority of existing housing stock in BC is already within 500 metres of a school. Finally, this site is currently owned by the city, and its development would not displace any existing tenants. Its design and approach are very similar to the recently approved supportive housing just last week at 1406 East Kingett Ave. More of this type of housing is needed everywhere, including Kitsellano. With all of council campaigning on a slate of tackling the housing crisis, I sincerely hope that this project that would provide 129 new affordable, deep subsidy homes would be approved. These homes will save lives, and we can't afford any further delays. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but thank you for calling in. Next, we have speaker number 14, Jill Atkey.
Good evening, Chair Bly and Council. My name is Jill Atkey, and I'm the CEO of BC Nonprofit Housing Association and also a Vancouver resident. I'm speaking in support of the rezoning application for the Arbutus Street supportive and affordable rental housing development and in support of 129 much-needed homes in Vancouver. In preparing my remarks, I was reflecting on the fact that I've spent a lot of time before you this year, as recently as two weeks ago, in discussing a similar proposal on the east side as the previous speaker just mentioned. I want to congratulate you for unanimously approving those 109 new homes on the east side, and am hopeful for a similar outcome this evening, or whenever you can make your decision on the west side. So it's not unusual for housing developments like the one before you this evening to experience community opposition. This one, I will say, has been particularly acrimonious, but we've been here before, so I thought it might be useful to revisit a past project approved by a previous council and see what sort of impact it's had on the community. Here's what the Thunderbird newspaper had to say in an article two years after the Dunbar Apartments opened in 2011. Residents, and this is a quote, "Residents of a wealthy Vancouver neighbourhood, often known for resisting attempts at change, are embracing their new neighbours in an apartment building for the homeless and mentally ill." The Dunbar Apartments opened two years ago amid safety concerns and fears that could lead to increased crime in the area. Today, its residents are becoming integrated into the community." This is a quote, "Everyone told me that there would be break-ins, but it's only the crows that have stolen anything from me," says BJ Jaffer, who owns a nearby convenience store. She knows all of the residents by name and says they are very polite. Jan Ozzapov, who moved into the Dunbar Apartments from the downtown east side, says that the people were wary of him at first, but now better understand his situation. He says, "Everybody I've actually talked to, they might not be sure at first, but once they've talked to me, they've completely changed their mind and seen where we're coming from." There are similar stories about other supportive housing sites around the city, like Marpool, which had also triggered significant fear about community safety. To be clear, there are many schools located next to supportive housing sites, and there is no evidence to suggest that housed people are a threat to children. It's important to note as well that the harmful comments in the public engagement process at the Marpool site also triggered safety fears amongst potential residents of the supportive housing development. CBC News reported on March 6, 2018, that, quote, "At least five people who spent years sleeping on Vancouver streets or in its parks turned down a spot in a brand-new apartment development for the homeless because of the level of opposition in that neighbourhood", unquote. The building manager said that they weren't sure if they were going to be safe, and to me, that's the real harm. By and large, Vancouverites want all levels of government to take meaningful action on housing and homelessness, including building and approving new homes. We, along with our partners at Co-op Housing Federation and the Aboriginal Housing Management Association, recently commissioned public polling about the issues that are top of mind for British Columbians heading into the municipal elections. The number-one issue was housing, homelessness and poverty at 39%, followed by healthcare at 18%. To be clear, that doesn't mean that 60% don't want you to take action, just that it's not their top issue, but it might be number two or number three. More than any other issue, citizens want locally-elected officials to take action on the housing and homelessness issue, and to me, that means approving projects as they come forward to council. The polling we've done would suggest that overall, citizens want all levels of government to get on with solving the crisis, including strong support for municipal action on housing in all communities across the city. This project has all levels of government making an investment, something council has advocated for. The opportunity is now before you, and I urge you to vote in favour of 129 new homes in the midst of a housing crisis. I thank you for your time this evening.
And thank you very much for calling in. You do have questions? First, on the queue, councillor Boyle.
Thanks so much for making the time to phone in this evening. I have a couple of questions, and the first is from your experience in the sector and all of the examples that you cite. I'm wondering what you might offer in terms of lessons or suggestions for setting up this building and the new neighbours who will move into it for success? What have existing neighbours around other sites done to support the building, support the neighbours, help make sure that they feel welcome and safe?
Yeah, so I can speak to that through new housing developments, and particularly supportive housing developments. We've heard stories chronicled in the media, but also directly from housing providers of neighbours arriving with welcome baskets and gifts for new residents, and then, just like any other neighbour that you have moved into your community, start a conversation and form relationships like neighbours do with one another. And I think that can really help some of, to reduce some barriers and reduce some of the stigma that we often hear about in communities.
I appreciate that. My other question is around funding, which, again, you have lots of experience in the sector. We heard from BC Housing that if this project doesn't go forward, the funding will go to another project that's ready elsewhere in the province. I'm wondering what you can say about the competition for those senior government funds, and what likelihood we would have if we could say no to this and just use the money in a different way in Vancouver?
Yeah, unfortunately, the funds are not earmarked for Vancouver, so the project before you is the one that is proposed. There is no alternate project necessarily in the city of Vancouver, so turning down a project means that those funds get reallocated to a community that is ready and willing and actively seeking partnership with senior levels of government.
Okay, thanks. I'll leave it there. Thanks again.
Thank you.
You have more questions? Councillor Carr.
Yes, thanks so much, Jill. I appreciate you coming to speak to us. You noted in your comments that there are many schools near supportive housing with no problems. I'm wondering, can you detail any examples of that within Vancouver?
Oh, yeah, there are. I mean, we've got the Marpool site. As Heidi Hartman mentioned in the responses to staff last night, that 57% of all supportive housing in the entire province is within 500 metres of schools. And there are a number of sites over on the east side that are in very close proximity to schools. And I just want to reinforce that, you know, if incidents have occurred in any of these sites, it is very, very likely that that would be covered in the media, and we would be hearing about that regularly. And the province would be seriously rethinking its strategy around supportive housing and how they provide supports for people experiencing homelessness. So I don't have a list off the top of my head in Vancouver, but that's certainly something we can follow up on.
That would be great. Appreciate that. We'll be in this public hearing for a number of nights, so there's a bit of time there. As a follow-up to that, in terms of the kinds of social housing, do you know if any analysis that's been done around, you know, who the tenants are, like what kind of... There's been issues pointed out by speakers before you around, around sort of some clients versus others, and so I'm wondering if there's any analysis around who is housed and whether that makes a difference around any incidents in the neighbourhoods that they're located in.
Councillor Carr, I just want to note, and I'm going to be more, I just want to, we haven't yet had a specific question related to teneting. And given Legal's advice at the beginning, I just want to be sure that your question is appropriate, based on the advice given by Legal. We have Legal on the line? I'm just looking to city manager if we have Legal on the line. I think we need to just make sure we're not opening this up at this early stage.
Hi, Chair Bly. Yes, I am on the line. If you wanted to take a, like, very brief, one, two-minute recess to ask a question, I'm happy to go offline with you. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, councillor Carr, is there another way that you could phrase your question that could keep this more to the guidance that we got from Legal? that could keep this more to the guidance that we got from Legal?
I'm sorry, Acting Mayor, I thought the guidance was that it was okay to be talking about this, but because the housing agreement is stated in our documents, but perhaps I got that wrong and you could seek re clarification?
Yeah, okay, that's a very good point. Let's... I will just take a quick two-minute recess and we'll get very clear on the parameters around discussion around tenancy, so that we can help guide this conversation for the balance of the evening. So I'll come back in two minutes. Meeting back to order. So, Councillor Carr, I just, as I understood your question...
Hello.
Hi, clerks, we have an open line there. So, Councillor Carr, in checking with Legal, and we will reset your timer, there are... Because you're asking a general question around tenancy and other buildings, that is okay, although it then does sort of veer quite a ways off away from this particular building, so just bringing your question back specifically to this building. And just so council is clear, we can talk about tenancy, but we can't talk about tenants specifically, or what that supposed tenant may or may not be like. So just to be clear on what the discerning line is there, that we can talk about tenancy, but not necessarily tenants specifically. So thanks, Councillor Carr, for your patience. I just want to make sure we can start this conversation at this meeting right tonight with clearer guidelines. So you're free to pose your question and just ask that we veer the topic back to this particular application.
Okay, I'm going to leave it to you to figure out if I'm in line or not with that, because I felt that if it has to do with the agreements, and it is the subject of many of the speakers, is coming to us through this public hearing. My question to Jill Atkey, because she raised the issue of the fact that there are, you know, many sites within... There are many, sorry, sites near schools, and there's never been any problems related to the tenants. And so I just wanted to know from her if she knows if those sites, where there are no problems, they're near schools, no problems, that there is a variety of tenants in those buildings? I didn't make it any more specific than that, but just a variety of tenants receiving the social housing supports.
Hi, it's Jill Atkey here. So through the tenancy process, the right balance is typically sought by the housing provider in partnership with BC Housing to ensure that the tenants are a good match for the supports received on-site. So each supportive housing development is going to look a little bit different in terms of their tenant mix. And again, it changes over time, depending on needs of tenants, as some transition out and others transition in, then those supports can be adjusted with time through that relationship with BC Housing.
Great. I guess in a follow-up question, Jill, my interest, and I don't know, if you don't have the information now, that's fine, but potentially, if it could be supplied to council, if it's available, would be that regarding your comment that there are many schools near supportive housing and no problems, it would be interesting, I think, to know if those housing, if that housing, supportive housing, near schools, has included a wide variety of tenants. You know, including people with disabilities, people who have challenges around mental health issues or addiction issues, that are receiving the support and care that they need in that housing.
Okay, so I think we can probably get you, Councillor Carr, is a listing of supportive housing developments or sites near schools, say within 500 metres of a school. By definition, all supportive housing is going to provide a mix of supports for people with disabilities, people experiencing mental illness, and/or people suffering or drug users. So by definition, there will be some mix. The mix is going to vary, but... And I don't think we'll be able to get you a breakdown necessarily of quote-unquote tenant type in supportive housing near schools, but by definition, that's what supportive housing does.
Okay, okay, that would be helpful. Thank you, Jill, appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
You do have more questions? Councillor Dominado.
Hi, thanks, Chair, and hi, Jill. Just curious if you could comment from your experience of supportive housing that you've visited, and what has been the number of units that has been optimal?
I've visited and had tours of a pretty broad range of supportive housing sites, and I wouldn't say necessarily that there is an optimal size. In some cases, it's going to depend on the non-profit operator and what their service delivery model is. But I've visited sites with as few as 40 units, and then sites with, you know, in the 90 to 100 unit range, and have had the opportunity to engage with residents of supportive housing sites, and to get a sense of the supports delivered to them, whether it's meals, counselling, healthcare services. And by and large, the communities that I have visited, residents, you know, have adapted to their housing environment and are at home there, and, you know, are appreciative of the services that they're receiving.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I have a couple more questions I want to move through. You mentioned at the outset about how, to some degree, this process has been acrimonious, and I'm curious if you have any perspective and maybe feedback on how this process could have been different in terms of communications, engagement with residents, the public, information, sharing, transparency, because that's certainly part of the feedback that we've heard. Do you have any thoughts or perspective on that?
Do you know, to be honest, Councillor Dominado, I have not been heavily involved in the engagement process, so I wouldn't feel comfortable commenting on that.
No, that's totally fine. My other question is around, appreciating where you're coming from, that there are many supportive housing frameworks and developments around the city, largely successful, but we do get the question about ultimately who's responsible and accountable for issues that might happen outside the building in the public realm. And I ask the question in the context of not stigmatizing, but in the context of people's fears that they bring to us about, well, what if we find needles outside the building or near the school or on the playground? Is how would you suggest that that be addressed? Does that lie with the operator of the building? How do we handle those type of queries where people are coming from a place of fear or in interest of their kids? I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Most supportive housing sites do have community advisory committees, and so that's a great place for issues to be raised. And the... I'm just trying to think, the majority of supportive housing sites that I have visited and toured, there is a considerable amount of community cleanup, to the extent that I have heard from surrounding residents that the neighbourhood is actually cleaner than before the supportive housing went in. So those kinds of conversations are really important. Supportive housing providers and their residents want to be good neighbours and typically are good neighbours. So just developing the relationships and keeping the conversation ongoing, I think is the best way to address any of those issues as they come forward.
I appreciate that, thanks, Jill. And just one last question I was asking Nick last night about programming, and he talked about the importance of, it's not necessarily about the size of the building, but it's about the quality of the programmes. I'm curious, in your experience, can you comment on successful supportive housing in the context of staffing supports and ratios and programming, both inside and through outreach, and what that looks like from your perspective?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that sort of information in front of me, but is an area that I could also follow up on. In terms of ratios, I think it'll be a challenge to find a hard and fast rule, because it will depend a bit on the resident mix. And I know that supportive housing providers, particularly in the initial tenancy of a building, are careful to get the mix just right, so that the supports match the needs of the residents, and then that can be adjusted over time, as well as sort of a phased move-in process, so that it doesn't all happen at once. So those are some of the ways that housing providers mitigate any concerns around that initial tenancy. And I'll see if I can...
Sorry, Jill, I hate to interrupt you, but we are quite a bit over Councillor Dominado's time.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it.
Jill, you do have more questions, though. Councillor Fry.
Thanks, and thanks, Jill. Thanks for joining us and sharing your expertise. It is really appreciated, and you bring a lot of knowledge and wealth of knowledge to this conversation. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And I also, just to echo Councillor Carr, I really do look forward to seeing some of the... Because I've looked at some of the proximity of supportive housing to schools, for instance, and haven't found a lot... I mean, we talked about 500 metres, but relatively speaking, I guess, this location's about 50 metres distance, and 500 metres would put you at Burrard Street. So I think that's a big scope of distance, so possibly closer proximity is probably helpful in that kind of analysis. But when we talk about, like, proximity, I think what keeps coming up is the Reederman Residence, which is 78 supportive units across the street from Ideal Mini and Sir Wilford Laurier. And I found the condition of approval from the development permit stage from Gil Kelly in November 27, 2017. And he talks about, you know, report backs and community advisory and, you know, just keeping that kind of conversation and report backs going. But the one thing that I wanted to highlight, and I just wanted to ask your opinion on whether or not this is sort of appropriate, or in your experience, this is something that's done, is he actually articulates that this site will be tenanted in accordance with affordable slash supportive housing tenancy best practices, taking into consideration the surrounding neighbourhood, including the adjacent schools and other uses. And so that kind of jumped out at me in the approval at DP. And I'm wondering if you think that that's an appropriate kind of piece to include? Is that something that you've experienced in a similar context?
A specific agreement in place, councillor?
Yeah, so these were conditions that he'd applied at the DP stage, so it didn't go through a rezoning because of the way we do temporary modular housing. So it skipped rezoning, went straight to DP. And Gil Kelly's sort of, like, preamble is, he takes it very seriously, he's taken the members, stakeholders, and looked at the overall need for supportive housing, and yada, 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 so forth. But the salient line here, to me, is this site will be tenanted in accordance with affordable slash supportive housing tenancy best practices, taking into consideration the surrounding neighbourhood, including adjacent schools and other uses. And I'm just... I mean, to me, I think that's the kind of language that would give everybody a sort of degree of comfort. I'm just wondering how typical that is in housing agreements that you've maybe seen come across the desk.
Yeah, we've seen some supportive housing developments come forward and be approved with good neighbour agreements and those sorts of agreements in place, like a community advisory committee. And best practices in supportive housing are sort of de facto followed by housing operators or supportive housing operators. So it seems fairly consistent with what you're reading out there, but also on that would defer to the proponent, as well as the operator, for any specific follow-up on this project in particular.
Yeah, now, do you... These kind of things are helpful in setting sort of like goal-setting and expectation clarity for both the operator and for the public, and really getting everybody on the same page, because I think that's where we need to get with this, is getting clear expectations and understandings.
Yeah, I think, I mean, what the operator, and this is not uncommon for supportive housing, is the operator's going to, if this project goes forward and is approved, will develop relationships in the neighbourhood, as they do in all of the neighbourhoods that MPA operates within. And those relationships can be structured in a number of different ways. I wouldn't want, in this particular case, because I'm not close enough to this project, to be prescribing a certain solution without consulting with the proponent.
Totally hear that. And so just lastly, and I just have 30 seconds, when he describes housing tenancy best practices, is there sort of a guidebook for housing tenancy, supportive housing tenancy best practices? Is there somewhere we can reference?
That's something that I can follow up with you on, councillor, and not something that I have on hand right now.
Totally appreciate it. Thanks very much, Jill. I very much appreciate the clarity.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. You do have more questions? Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And following up on Councillor Fry's request, I'd also love to, I think all council needs to receive that information in public hearing, but I'd like to see the reference to best practices, so that would be great. My question is, Jill, kind of building on some of my previous council members' questions, is how would you respond to some of the feedback or comments? is how would you respond to some of the feedback or commentary that council has received that some nonprofit providers did not want to pursue the opportunity to run the site due to the size of the number of units, or out of concern that there is not going to be sufficient operational budget provided to provide the quality level of support that they felt were necessary? We've heard that from a few folks. How would you respond to that?
Yeah, the way I would respond to that is, the nonprofit sector is a broad sector. There's more than 800 nonprofit housing providers in B.C., several hundred in Vancouver alone. And some of those are supportive housing providers as well. And the reason we have a broad range is that they have a broad range of expertise and service that they provide, and a broad range of missions in many ways. And so as projects come forward, nonprofits are going to take a look and see whether or not that's aligned with either the housing they have in their portfolio, or their particular mission, or not. And absolutely, some may choose not to bid on specific projects. The one thing I would note as well, and I'm not familiar with the situation that was referenced, but a nonprofit may have declined to bid when the project was 129 supportive homes, because that's not the right fit for their portfolio, and not the kind of housing they want to be delivering. Another provider may step in and say that is the right fit for their portfolio and the type of supports that they provide. But since that time, the number of supportive homes in this project, despite the desperate need in the city of Vancouver, has been reduced by half. So in and around 65 of these units are supportive housing units.
Sorry, go, carry on, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. 65 of those units are supportive housing units, and not the full 129. And so that reduces, again, the amount of support and the quote-unquote manageability of it, if there are nonprofits that have those concerns.
Okay, I appreciate the perspective. I'm still hearing some of our concerns, but I appreciate the point of view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those are the end of your questions, Jill. And just a reminder to all councillors and anybody who's receiving additional information, that it needs to go through the city clerk's office, and that link has been tweeted out. And that's just a requirement of the quasi-judicial process that we're in.
Terrific. Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you very much. So we'll be moving on now to Speaker number 15, Tracy Reimer. And I have it that Tracy Reimer is in person.
Yes, I am. Hi, my name is Tracy Reimer. I live in a three-story apartment building in the 15 square blocks between Arbutus and Burrard, and Broadway and Fourth, and the unceded territory of the Musqueam peoples. I have medical problems speaking, but I will try to say this in five minutes. Our neighborhood has been portrayed as being privileged. It is one of the most affordable neighborhoods in Vancouver, where I live. In my neighborhood, 99% of us live in three-story apartments, older. Most of our buildings contain 40 households in a footprint of two single-family dwellings. I believe our 15 blocks contain somewhere in the area of at least 3,000 households. But make no mistake, we are a neighborhood in the best of the sense. We don't mind having people with addiction or mental health problems in our neighborhood. They are present in every single one of our buildings. They are part of us. We look out for them, and they look out for us. We were told when you built the Greenway that we have one of the tiniest green spaces per capita of any neighborhood in the city. With 40 households in a building, you know the people you share your building with, and many of the neighboring buildings. People know when someone with an addiction is struggling, and offer a diversion and companionship. People know when I struggle with my own health problems and cook me meals when my brain refuses to work. Myself and my 14-year-old neighbor have a passion for young adult literature and share books, and we gently socialize our neighbor with Asperger's. That is community. It also means that most of us do not have our own yards or green space. We've shared for many years that little patch of green you call Delamont Park. It is about the size of one to two single-family dwelling lots. It is primarily a playground for young children. On hot days in the summer, between 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., no one uses it because it has the wrong types of trees in the wrong places and is as hot as Hades. We grill-a-garden the disused rail corridor into community gardens, and we have a tree lot that used to hold a house. When CN was in negotiations with the city, they tore through the disused rail line in our neighborhood, cutting down or apart many trees, as well as half of our community gardens. Then the city put in a bike path. That was well and good. However, the city has made it clear they don't want us to replace the gardens or the trees that were cut down, because you want to run a train through our neighborhood. Beside the bike path, this will remove all the greenery left on our part of the Greenway. We had already started calling it the Green Desert, because there is no shade along it. Now you'll remove the rest of it, including our gardens. And there will be no chance of quiet anywhere in our neighborhood with a train cutting through the middle of us all. We are surrounded by Fourth and Broadway, Arbutus and Burrard. There's no further need to bisect us. Last summer, when it got so hot, our neighborhood got together and built and painted three benches in the tree lot, so people could cool off. One of the points you're missing is that one of the largest buildings is the low-income seniors' building on Maple. I've seen many residents of this building struggle just to walk to London Drugs and back. They are not able to walk to Kit's Beach or Connaught Park. A lot of our residents, who are rougher around the edges, used to lie down under the trees in that lot to hang out away from the children. Parents are very hesitant around people who sit in a playground and don't have children. Even myself, who was once a community health nurse, is often watched closely. On the new benches under the trees, we are able to sit, and the residents who are hesitant to, or physically disabled to join us, join them now, too. It's been a wonderful space for connecting. Now you want to put a building containing 130 more households on this shady spot with benches. Next door to that building on 8th Avenue is a wonderful co-op on city land, which contains 40 households. Most folks in that building are low-income. They are people who live in, the people who live in that building live on a government disability allowance of $1,100 a month. It sits, again, on a lot of about the size of two to three family dwellings. Unfortunately, when the city renewed their lease at Christmas, they were told they had five years to come up with a plan to increase their households from 40 to 150 on that same patch of land. So presently, we're increasing households by 300, running a rail line through our 15 blocks, stripping us of every single green space except for the tiny children's playground. However, because of the new building, the playground will not get any sun in the winter, but will still get full sun in the summertime. Do you expect us all?
I'm just going to pause you there, just because you are over your time. But you do have questions, so I wonder if I can advance Councilor Dominado for questions?
I only have about eight more sentences. May I just finish? I will have to live 30 feet from this. I live in this neighborhood, and I will for the rest of my life.
I understand. But I did give you an additional 30 seconds over the five minutes, and I just have to be fair and offer the same amount of time to every speaker. So I'm going to advance Councilor Dominado, and you'll be able to answer her questions, and she does have five minutes.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Tracy, for coming in. I just wanted to clarify, what I heard in your comments is that largely you're concerned about the loss of green space and the lack of green space in the area. Is that right? Because I've heard different concerns through correspondence and through speakers so far.
Yes, yes. Green space that people can walk to, green space where people can connect with. It's important that we connect with our neighbors. And all we have, all you've given us is Connaught Park, and we have 3,000 residents. We also, when I looked at your green area around City Hall, you probably have almost as much green space here as we have between Broadway and Fourth, between, from Fur Street all the way to Alma Street. And so we, and we all live in these buildings that don't have yards.
Thanks. I appreciate you clarifying that. It's certainly a theme we've been hearing, and I seem to recall from our four-year capital plan that we just approved that there's actually allocations within there for additional park space, right, in that area or expansion. But I appreciate you clarifying that specifically, just so we understand, because everyone has different perspectives about why they support or don't support the additional housing. And I just wanted to be clear on what the concern was. Thank you. I think there's other speakers, though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Dominado. Councilor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you speaking. I know you mentioned that it's difficult for you, because you have a medical challenge. After the green space, what's your second key concern? I just wanted to be clear in terms of the takeaway from your comments.
Noise through the neighborhood. I think we have really good transit space on Broadway and Fourth and on Burrard, and I don't think you need to send a train down the middle of us.
Okay, but with respect to this specific project, because we're not talking about the Broadway subway extension that's outside of this?
But you're putting these people next to that. You're putting them next to a train and a bus circle in a neighborhood that will have no green space, except for that tiny Delamont Park.
Okay, so it's the impact, it's the development of the site as a whole versus keeping it as accessible space for the neighborhood?
Yes. There are so many plans for our little 15-block space, that if you don't connect the dots between all of your projects, you don't understand how much we're losing.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Speaker, those are all your questions. We do appreciate you coming into council to speak.
But just please don't put the highest number of people in the noisiest places in our city. That's what the plan for densification seems to be so far. Please put them near parks.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. I believe there's another speaker. Speaker 16 is also in person, James Cooper.
I am. And I do have a slide deck.
Oh, wow.
Autumn Ashan. So my name is James Cooper. I'm a resident of Vancouver since 1967. It's the first time I've come to City Hall to speak. I'm motivated. I'm speaking for me. I am opposed to the rezoning application solely on the form. It doesn't matter if you have Saudi Princess, or if you have supportive housing. The building is just too tall and too large for the site. Not every site in the city is capable or should support a high-rise development. Nobody is decrying supportive housing. I think it's a very noble act. It's just that in what you do in the form that's being proposed is so against every rule that we, the city, have for rezoning guidelines, for guidelines for urban design, for good urban design, for urban design that's been with us since 1920s New York City, where they started. So I like to start with a slide showing pictures of the neighborhood. Nope, no, please, please. It shows what the area looks like. You have smallish buildings that are allowed to be close to the sidewalk, and even the larger buildings are capped by an RM4 zoning, which keeps, or which has developed the neighborhood character. The neighborhood character and urban fabric is solid, is stable, and is very much like the pictures you see before you. It is possible to bring density and height into this urban structure, this urban fabric, but you have to do it in the right way. You have to do it in a way that respects all the rules. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the site plan as proposed. The hatched area is where all the density of the tower is located. The site is long and narrow. The proposal ignores putting out the density uniformly, chooses to concentrate it in that hatched area. So, but please understand, look at the bottom. Look at the bottom edge. There's two feet away from the property line. There's the full 155 feet of the tower will be there. It will come crashing down to the sidewalk. Next slide, please. And this is the width of Arbutus Street. It is not a major arterial at this point. It is essentially a two-lane road with a parking in some places on one side or the other, depending on where you are. Not a busy high street as you would expect. Next slide, please. And this is what it looks like in front of the proposed tower. It is a narrow residential sidewalk, six feet wide. There's a smallish planting strip, three feet wide, including the trees. And you see that yellow fence? That's where the entire face, 155 feet, will come crashing down. Next slide, please. So it is a vertical tower without a buffer, and we do have rules. I'm an architect. I'm licensed in British Columbia, State of Washington, Oregon, and California. Nowhere where I work, nobody does this. I mean, the proposal is nice on Seventh, because it sets back. Not so much so on Eighth, but on this part of Arbutus Street, it's horrible. Not only does it not set back according to most of our development rules, our own zoning bylaw regulations, rezoning guidelines, it does the opposite. It cantilevers towards the sidewalk. It's only two feet away. The little sketch on your right is just a basic design that, you know, essentially is a ratio. The higher you go, the more green space as a buffer you have to provide. Next slide, please. And so why don't we just sort of experientially what it is? I heard a question, I think it was rhetorical question by one of the councillors, saying, "Well, so what if you don't have? So what if you don't have light?" Well, it's democracy. You can't act like a bully, and you can't impose your will onto others. It's democratic architecture. When you look at the photograph to the left, that is about a six-story building in Vancouver, but the sidewalk is 14 feet wide. It's not nine. And imagine walking beside that, but imagine that two and a half times taller and casting a very stronger shadow for much more time. Next slide, please. That's what it is. Next slide, please. So it's four times higher than anywhere else in the city. Next slide, please. And that's the fearsomeness of not having any buffers. Next slide, please. And that's what you see most around. Next slide, please.
Okay, this does bring you to the end of your time, but you do have questions. So I'm going to advance the first councillor on the queue, which is Councilor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for coming in. I wondered if you were an architect. I'm curious, I was reading the UDP comments in the report, and they did talk about concerns around the public realm.
Yes.
And I'm wondering about, I was going to, I had written this down the other day, a question about setbacks, and whether, if this was supported by council, if direction could be given, or conditions around more setbacks on that side of the street, because to the point you're pointing out, it's right to the property line.
Well, I think that is, when you come to the conclusion, when you have to do that, right? When you propose this form of development, you make your choices, and you have to do that because of the choices you made. There's no other spot for the size and height of building. So the only conclusion you can draw is this form of development is too big, is too large. And no one, no one, no one decries housing the poor. There's a great nobility in that. But if it hurts the neighborhood and hurts other people, some of that nobility, I think, is tarnished.
It sounds like, though, and I just want to reflect this back so I'm clear, what I'm hearing, though, from you, is you're bringing a perspective of the built form.
Yes, ma'am.
So the previous speaker was talking about the loss of green space. In this case, you're looking at it through the lens of the built form itself.
Right. We're not discussing the programmatic issues of the activities. We're discussing that it's not appropriate to have this built form. There is many ways that one can execute a tall building. You know, for many years, I made a living... a tall building. You know, for many years, that was, I made a living doing that. But there are many, many ways of doing that. I don't see in completion a good way as is presented.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll follow up with staff when we have the next opportunity to ask questions.
May, Madam Chair, may I make a request?
And no, that wouldn't be typical. You do have more questions, though. Councillor Hardwick.
Thank you. I'd just like to request specifically this PowerPoint presentation from the speaker. Speaker, are you prepared to provide that to council?
Through Madam Chair, to the councillor, I would be happy to because I took too long yakking and my punchline was on slide 14 that you didn't get to see. So I would be very, I would be very happy to publish it.
Sorry, would you indulge us with slide 14? Because I've got about a minute left.
If Madam Chair, if Madam Chair would indulge.
This is councillor Hardwick's time, so you are free to answer the response or the question.
Clerks, may I request slide 14, please? Slide 14, keep going, please. Yes. So if in the staff report it says that, well, the people mostly need are the supportive housing recipients, then that means of 129, why not build 65 of them right now? So what I've done is I've given the opportunity to give a thought. Why not do a five-ish story building to house 65, distribute the density throughout the site and not concentrate it in the tower? Build that instead of a tower. I can tell you that the tower that's being presented will be built for around $500 to $600 a square foot. It is not inexpensive to build a tall building, and especially for an institutional slash residential use. But you can execute that in wood frame and five to six stories at much cheaper, probably $300 and $400. Use their money, buy another site, build another one.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all your, oh, actually, you do have more questions. Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. While we're discussing built form, this building is proposed to be permanent modular housing, not temporary, as we said, but we're told permanent modular, therefore having a concrete slab, but being told being more expeditious to, sorry, to build and less disruptive because of some of the components happening off-site. Do you have any comments with respects to that? And specifically, the second part is, I'd love to hear any thoughts around the narrow width of the site at 75 feet relative to the amount, what they're trying to accomplish in terms of units here.
Through Madam Chair, to councillor, my professional view is that there is no reason to have units pre-made in this manner. They're not of a mass timber construction, which would have some ecological benefit. They are, they're built that way. Their floor-to-floor heights by necessity makes the building far higher than it needs to be. So if you have 12, 13, or however many stories there are, the story heights that are being proposed are close to 11 feet per story. You can execute the same program by using an onsite-built methodology by, and have nine-foot floor-to-floor heights, saving a lot of height. So it's not a system that's saving any money. And it does have, if you have a clever crane operator, it can crane into place quickly. But the construction time being in the factory, I don't believe is, it's not necessarily said that it would be any faster or any quicker.
Okay, that's part of the question, just because I have limited time, is with respect to comments on the 75-foot depth of the site.
Yeah, it's very narrow. Because it is so narrow, you cannot have the horizontal buffers you need for a tall building. Councillors, this is your bread and butter. You live this every day in redevelopment or rezoning applications for tall buildings. You need either a short podium against the sidewalk to keep the pedestrian scale. And the tall part of the building is set back. If you don't have that, you have to set back the building a long ways. And the narrowness of the site does not, absolutely does not allow that.
Right. I feel like it is trying to sort of, they're literally trying to fit a building into a very small footprint. Is that a fair reflection?
The building is too big, it's too tall for the site. Yes, the geometry and the size of the site will not, will not support it.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, councillor Kirby Young. Those are all your questions. We do appreciate you coming in to speak to council today. Next, we have speaker number 17, Lindsay Murphy, who's calling in.
Thank you.
Your, we can hear you loud and clear. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. My name's Lindsay Murphy. I'm a Kitsellano resident, and I strongly support this proposal. I moved to Kitsellano 12 years ago. My children were born here and now attend a Kitsellano elementary school. Having lived in the city for over a decade, I've seen a steady deterioration in the housing market. We have seen many of our neighbors leave through forced rent evictions or just no longer being able to afford rents in the city. These were often valued community members, and their losses felt by many. I have neighbors who rely on limited fixed income and inadequate benefits to be able to stay in the neighborhood, close to friends and their family. And they have often expressed concerns that they will have nowhere to go if their current arrangement ends. This proposal of a mix of shelter rate and supportive housing is so desperately needed in this neighborhood so that people like my neighbors might be able to find a permanent home and the comfort that comes with knowing that their housing is stable. The city and country are in a housing crisis. Just last week, CMHC reported that the estimated need for new homes was significantly short. Some 3.5 million additional houses are needed by 2030. I listened yesterday and over the last year to the many neighborhood concerns about the model proposed at Eighth and Arbuthnot. This is not a new model. In fact, council approved the same model just last week in East Vancouver. The assertion that there is no doubt is to support this congregate housing-first model as a successful one is false. This is a widely used and well-supported model that has repeatedly resulted in positive outcomes for both chronic homelessness in many communities and the individual benefits of improved health, mental wellbeing, long-term outcomes for remaining housed, and toxic drug supply poisoning. In his 2016 publication, Strategic Response to Homelessness in Finland, housing policy expert Nicholas Place out of the University of York reviews the differences between the Finnish housing policy to eliminate housing, sorry, homelessness versus the rest of Europe, while noting that Finland has had the most positive homelessness outcome in Europe. He notes the major difference between the Finnish housing model and the pathways model is the use of congregate housing. Some blocks, including 90 or more apartments, all of whom were housing first service users. Congregate housing services are the core of the Finnish strategy. It faced similar concerns that placing large supportive housing projects in communities would fail, not result in the intended welfare outcomes, and be detrimental to communities. However, this was not the case. They found that the long-term hard-to-house persons were successfully remaining housed. Residents can find supportive community in their peers in congregate housing, but it's harder to create in a scattered housing model. In fact, some studies have shown that the scattered housing model with mobile supports can lead to social isolation, resulting in negative health impacts and lower success rates. Sorry. Studies also regularly support a housing approach that is not tied to obligatory treatment or assistance, having proven the most positive outcomes for reducing homelessness and improving the lives of the people who call these buildings home. The presence of harm reduction and open-ended social and mental health support only improves these results. Housing is a human right, not negotiable or earned privilege, that is decided by residents in the neighborhood. No one needs criminal background checks or drug tests to buy a home, and residents certainly do not have the right to block a sale. So I do not understand why they have the right to block 129 homes that are desperately needed. If the East Vancouver project was approved, the money has been provided by all levels of government, and the land is ready and waiting. And I believe council has a duty to support the human rights of 129 people who will be making this home and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no questions. We appreciate you coming, you're calling in to speak to council.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number 18, Rebecca Cleary.
Councillors, my name is Rebecca Cleary. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I oppose the rezoning application. This rezoning proposes 129 single occupancy studio apartments for that sole purpose for the next 60 years with no commitments, only assurances that the housing will work as intended and the concerns of residents will dissipate over time. Advocates suggest that there are handful of supportive housing buildings next to schools and many more within 500 meters of schools. Social housing within 500 meters of a school is not comparable to this site. There are no other directly comparable permanent supportive housing buildings of this size which use a harm reduction approach 18 meters from an elementary school, 18 meters from a preschool, beside a playground, beside a major transit hub, and within walking distance to numerous other elementary schools. This is a unique location on city land that requires a unique approach and heightened care and attention. Instead of a unique approach, the neighborhood is being offered assurances that all will be well if we simply trust the various levels of government and participate on an advisory committee. Assurances are not commitments. Assurances are not enforceable. Community advisory committees provide advice. They do not have the power to make decisions or compel action. There are families and folks in recovery programs that need housing. The children are excluded from living in a building because of the, in this building because of the decision to use a harm reduction approach. But the proximity of children in the neighborhood is dismissed as an unfounded fear. BC Housing's April 22, 2022 independent audit on Penticton supportive housing buildings outlined the need for tiered levels of supportive housing. That audit found that some individuals in active recovery would benefit from a recovery-based housing model. Some individuals require very little support from staff and would benefit from an independent or subsidized housing option. Service providers stressed the importance of a tiered approach to supportive housing on differing levels of supports offered to meet the needs of residents. And that was a paraphrased quote from the Penticton report. Advocates will point to the immediate need for deeply affordable housing as a reason why this rezoning application ought to be approved now. Yes, there is an urgent need, but expediency should not ignore the unique location of this site. During every stage of consultation, it has consisted of no more than the presentation of the same talking points presented by staff and the applicants last evening. There are many types of social housing that could be successful on this site, which could proceed without a lengthy rezoning process, as current rezoning permits a six-story building capable of housing 129 folks in need. I want to quickly address a couple of issues that arose during the presentation yesterday. The only example of a supportive housing offered beside a school is the Reederman Apartments. The Reederman Apartments is temporary supportive housing. It is smaller and is very different than the building now proposed to hold a 60-year lease. The proposed resolution for council, the wording of it, a clause B, directs city legal council to prepare the housing agreement subject to the Director of Legal Services and General Manager of Plent. There is no indication that council or the public will have any input into the housing agreement beyond the scope of this hearing. We heard yesterday that the operating agreement will be negotiated between BC Housing and the operator. The council and public will have no input into the operating agreement. Again, the community is being asked to accept assurances that BC Housing will require support and services. When BC Housing yesterday first said they will employ best practices at this site, but then were unable to provide any specifics on what that would mean for this site in terms of staffing or support. We heard that excluding folks with convictions for violent criminal offenses would be contrary to human rights laws. And I urge council to seek a legal opinion on the BC Human Rights Code, addressing protective rights and tenancy premises, section 10, and a history of criminal conviction is not listed as a protective right. Councillor Frye said yesterday, this could be the opportunity for something great. I agree, but this is not it. As proposed, the rezoning, the building, the model, and the support are not just imperfect. They are wrong for this unique location. And if approved, as currently proposed, the neighborhood will feel the impact of that over the next 60 years. I urge council to reject this rezoning application and work with the neighborhood on a model of social housing for Arbuthnot, which addresses the uniqueness of this location.
Thank you very much. That is your time. There are no questions, but we appreciate hearing from you tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we will move, speaker 19 has withdrawn, so speaker 20, Christina Doyle. And I believe the speaker is in person.
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. You are free to begin.
Just before you start the time, I just wanted to note that I'll let you know when to press the video. That would be great, because there are two. So thank you. My name is Christina. I am a mother and a member of the neighborhood who speaks before you today in strong opposition of this proposal. Like many of my neighbors, after attending the in-person last night hearing what applicants had to say, I tossed my comments and decided to speak to the significant lack of knowledge the city planner has of the area. I am a practicing professional engineer and therefore would like to lend my comments in reaction to the first responder access question raised by council last night, as you were not given the correct information. It has become clear that as neighbors who live in the area, we are actually better suited to answer your questions. First, I want to play a video taken by a parent at Delmont Park at 3:15 PM. This is the time when children at our school are picked up. Watch as the southbound fire truck has to go around traffic, which is backed up past Fifth Avenue into oncoming traffic to navigate the area. Now, this next video shows a view directly looking at Seventh Avenue intersection at 3:14 PM on another school day at pickup. Note the median infrastructure and watch as a cyclist navigates the median and the northbound black vehicle does not stop, and crossing students are on both sides of the intersection. Please play. So you see the cyclist approaching. He's an adult, smart enough to linger, and the car almost hits him. Then you see a student on both the south side and north side running at one point to cross. Last night, it was suggested that any first responders called to this institutional tower would access the building off of Seventh Avenue. Well, Seventh Avenue is an active bike path. Cyclists use this route as it connects directly to the Arbuthnot Greenway. If the city planner was to step on site, they would know that at Seventh and Arbuthnot, there is a controlled median that does not allow vehicles to make a left turn while traveling southbound. It is at this very intersection that the school has raised multiple safety concerns to the city. This intersection currently has two pedestrian crossings, one on the south and one on the north, and the bikes cross through the middle of the median. Having multiple locations where vehicle interactions can be made with pedestrians and bikes is what we call driver overload. This is where too much is going on and the driver is unable to make a quick decision. Now imagine you're a child attempting to cross. You do not have the cognitive abilities like adults do to make the right decision. Hence, we have already had many near misses with children at the school. We reported them to the city, and we were ignored. I've met multiple times on-site with city reps, showing and explaining these safety concerns, even meeting just last week, last week over Zoom with traffic managers Lon Leclerc and Steve Brown on the matter, all of which has fallen on deaf ears. City planners have skipped vital components in the design regarding access to this tower facility. We know, based on emergency calls placed at the Marguerite Ford housing complex, that we can anticipate three calls a day to this site. Now, that's just not ambulances responding. This includes fire and police. So three vehicle units each day navigating an active school zone and by a toddler park. But oh, let's not forget, the term But oh, let's not forget the terminus station and bus loop on Eighth Avenue. All of this on a two-block postage stamp of an area. The station itself will bring 3,000 people per hour transitioning to buses and walking in the area, adding to the chaos that currently exists. Chaos that exists and the station, bus loop, and housing proposal before you are not yet built. The proposal will only compound the current traffic-related issues in the area, making our kids, my kids, less safe. It is blatantly clear that the city planner and the applicants have skipped key components in this design, disregarding the basic needs like emergency response access points. So what else have they missed? It is totally unacceptable as a member of the neighbourhood, but more so as a mother, that 450 schoolchildren just 17.8 metres away, not 500 metres away as stated multiple times tonight, and another 1,500 children within 300 metres have been ignored and not thought of. This proposal in its current form possesses the power to transform this quiet school district into one that has multiple daily emergency responders circling to put out threats to the public and child safety. Spillover effects are inevitable, and this is not acceptable as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You do have questions, Counselor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. I have a question for the speaker, but through you first. Do we have staff on the line who are listening to this information, just so I don't go down a rabbit hole?
What type of staff, Counselor Dominado?
I'm just hoping, do we have any planning or transportation staff on the line that might be taking notes of this conversation?
I can certainly ask the clerks to clarify, but I do see a number of our staff listed on the Webex at a minimum.
Okay, thank you. I can't see that from here. Thanks, Christina, for coming in. My question is, you centered a lot of your comments around pedestrian cyclist safety and vehicle traffic. You mentioned you had a meeting last week in this regard. Was there a conversation there around possible solutions in the broader context of what's the Arbutus Line terminus, as well as this proposed development? Obviously, this hasn't been approved, but was there any conversation around solutions? I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, it's interesting you should say that, because the school has proposed multiple solutions, and as well as the Broadway subway team that Project Co. is directly working with the school, because we're in an active, very busy construction zone. We actually have a project representative by the name of Tracy Cooper, who has 40-plus years of ministry experience, who's been at these multiple site visits with city staff there, and has explained that a flashing light at Arbutus and Seventh would significantly help that intersection. And he's also explained, like I mentioned in my speech here, that that intersection has significant driver overload. There are too many points of interaction between not only our kids, that like as explained, cannot navigate properly, but cyclists and vehicles. Just at the site visit that we had back in the fall, we witnessed a vehicle that almost struck a child, and the city traffic person who was there at the time said, well, that's just vehicle error. And as Tracy pointed out, well, vehicle error is happening because people are confused. So I go back to your first point. At these meetings that we've had, no solutions have been provided from the city. We were actually told that there is no funding to help at this particular intersection and point. When child safety comes to light like that, that surprised me, but I do understand there are budgetary constraints. We were also told in a letter that maybe the school should consider funding themselves to put up a light themselves, which was also surprising to me. So we have outside feedback, not necessarily from the city, but from experts. I would take a 42-year ministry who's the current traffic manager on the Broadway Subway project advice that a flashing light would be helpful there to help children interact, but also, he said, to eliminate one of the potential crossings so that kids are travelling on one crosswalk as opposed to two, where you then have multiple locations where someone could be hit, so.
Really appreciate, and I appreciate the level of detail you're offering, and the reason I'm asking is because while we can't ask questions of staff right now, we can in follow-up.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that, and I'll make sure to ask questions later.
Thank you.
See if there's other people who have questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Dominado. Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a quick follow-up. I actually asked that question last night with respect to emergency vehicles, because I'm very familiar with, I used to live in the neighbourhood quite close. So just to be clear, you're suggesting it's really not feasible for emergency vehicles to go along Seventh, and that they would more likely have to go north-south on Arbutus? How would you see that, based on the...
Yes. So it is a very, as the previous speaker, who was an architect, pointed out, Arbutus is an arterial road that is also significantly narrow and within a school zone. So right now, I mean, the video that I provided, I know wasn't the best of quality, just a simply a parent who was very concerned at the time, but when traffic is backed up past any point on that street, emergency vehicles travelling southbound have to go into oncoming traffic, and it's exactly the same, councillor, when you are travelling northbound. So when we relate to the question that you had posed with regards to the building, because this is what it's about this evening, I wanted to make sure that people understood. The planner clearly didn't understand that there is physical infrastructure at Seventh and Arbutus that restricts any kind of left turn heading eastbound, I should say, off of Arbutus on Seventh. So no matter what, emergency vehicles may have to do dangerous manoeuvres if there is someone that they need to get to in emergency-type fashion. This is something that the planners and the applicants did not consider. The building might need to be orientated for access on Eighth Avenue, but then I posed the same question. On Eighth Avenue, what do we have? An active bus loop that's going to bring 3,000 people a minute? So are now we are feeding responding vehicles on Eighth Avenue, which is significantly having even more increased traffic? I guess bringing to light, when everybody thinks about it, it's not inappropriate to say this is an absolute postage stamp of heavy infrastructure projects that are currently being built and are in the process of being proposed. The end of the line...
Go ahead. Sorry. No, finish your point, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, the end of a line construction, having a billion-dollar infrastructure project right on the corner, the bus terminus station that we know is going to be in place for at least five to 10 years. And at this meeting that I had, that Counselor Dominado asked me about, when we asked Lon Leclerc and Steve Brown, well, what are the analyses that you came to to say that this is going to be functioning? Well, once it's in operation, we'll see what happens. I'm sorry, but as a mother and as people that we have to answer to, to our other parents at the school, as a representative speaking here tonight, as a professional engineer, how do I go back to them and say, well, maybe if your kid gets hit at operation, they might do something about it? Right? The same thing that you were being told by the city planner and applicants last night. We'll see what happens once the building is in operation.
So the fact that there's a condition because it's yet undetermined where the driveway alignment will be, it's fair to say that's concerning to you at this point, given the significant physical constraints and activity around the site?
Absolutely. It's very concerning, councillor, because what we're currently dealing with isn't even a fraction of what's to come. And how do you answer that to concerned parents when they are getting no answers back?
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor DiGenova.
Thanks. I'm hoping you can tell me, what would you like to see this, and you don't have to answer my question, but what would you like to see council do with this project, considering your concerns and the concerns of other parents that you've heard for, that you're sharing in your presentation?
Absolutely. I mean, we represent a neighbourhood that cares about the neighbours, and so I am not opposed to a social housing project going there, but something in a smaller scale with diverse tenancy, right, that can be properly managed, right? We already have such significant constraints in the area from a traffic perspective, and now we're going to put a high-rise tower there with 129 residents to only add to, as you know, the previous lady said, with no green space there, no refuge for anybody? You are completely changing the significance of this neighbourhood. This neighbourhood was designed for children and families, yet the application proposal for this house has none of those people that would be given the opportunity to live there. Something smaller in scale would be appreciated, something with diverse tenancy, like families, like women with children. I mean, I want people to know, the school, the local neighbours are so actively involved in even the Women's Recovery House, Sanctum Mary House that is right around the corner. The reason it works is because there are people in the neighbourhood that care. The school has been there for 110 years. We have no intention of going anywhere. We want the community around us to continue to grow because we are good neighbours. There are so many safety aspects associated with this, and that's why, Counselor DiGenova, I scrapped my speech and said, I have to speak as a professional engineer, but more so as a mother this evening, because you guys will hear the same comments from your next 250 callers. So I needed to rectify the responders' comment to Counselor Kirby Young last night to make sure that was possible, but also to bring light that the neighbours know the area and the neighbours are not being listened to.
And just to follow up on the traffic piece.
Yes.
Although I do think the family stuff's important. My daughter's four. I understand where you're coming from. I'm wondering, specifically to the traffic piece, you had spoken a little bit about the interactions with our staff. What would you like to see instead?
Well, we'd like to see a controlled light at Seventh and Arbutus, for sure. If you want to come and see the chaos of pickup, I mean, the kids are out for the summer now, but come September, we have a laneway that we've currently created, I guess you could say the traffic around the school flows clockwise, which was a suggestion from the traffic planners at the city, and our principal has worked very closely with them, making sure that all of us parents fall into line as to where we drop our kids off, where they aren't allowed to go. It is very strategic to make sure we do not mangle traffic, but we need additional traffic control measures in place, like the flashing light. We need to be able to potentially make a left outside of our laneway so that we deter people from travelling down Arbutus and take that congestion away. We need additional speed bumps. We need raised crosswalks at those locations that are colourful, that are raised. Right now, we were told, best case, we might be able to paint your crosswalk at Seventh and Arbutus sometime this summer. That was at a site visit on November 8, 2022.
Arbutus at 8th is a lot...
Or Arbutus in 7th, sorry. Arbutus in 7th.
Arbutus in 7th is a lot more narrow than Arbutus in 25th.
Yeah, absolutely.
I see people travel up that way all the time. So you'd like to see that same care and attention to making sure.
Absolutely.
We're putting pedestrian safety and children's safety first, as we would at a large intersection as well.
Absolutely, yeah. And these are all very basic asks, and to be turned down each time saying there's no budget, or you know, the traffic count or speeds don't justify this? Not acceptable.
Thank you.
Appreciate your question.
Okay, those are your questions, so thank you very much for coming in to speak to council.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number 21. Speaker number 21, Catherine Tan.
Hello. Good evening.
Hi there, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Cathy Tan, a resident of Vancouver, and I live and work a few blocks from the proposed rezoning. I am opposed to the rezoning for the building in its current form. I have three reasons for opposing. First is because I do not believe that the support provided in this housing will be enough for the successful reintegration into society of the vulnerable people who will be residing within. Two staff members on-site for 24 hours cannot support a population of 129 residents with various needs, and there are no specifics on what other support will be available. Congregate supportive housing has been proven to fail those needing support, as seen in Dr Julian Summers' study. I have learned that community integration is key to the recovery of those vulnerable and suffering from mental health and substance use challenges. This proposal does not show how they will be helping the residents reintegrate into the community, aside from the rooms and meals provided. Second, this neighbourhood is full of families and multigenerations. I respectfully urge the city to consider housing families with children and seniors, and not only single adults or adults in partnership in separate units. Excuse me. Having adult family members housed in units next to each other is not humane, nor is it the same as having families with children, which this building wouldn't allow due to the single-unit design and model which supports drug consumption. Third, this building is too large and not suited to the neighbourhood. The school and playground 18 metres away is a very different logistics-wise from the Reiderman residence, which is 350 metres away from Wilfred Laurier School. That distance makes a huge difference in the impact of the housing project to the school and playground. Please vote no to this rezoning and give the neighbourhood a chance to work with BC Housing on something better. Please build for inclusion, build for safety, and build for the success of the neighbourhood and the vulnerable populations that call it home. Thank you for listening.
And thank you very much. There are no questions. We appreciate hearing from you tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we... Thank you. Next, we have speaker number 22, Sean Patrick Finnan.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, as you said, my name's Sean Patrick Finnan. I'm a resident of Kitsellano. I oppose strongly this rezoning. Speaking to the lack of consultation, I personally work as an assistant location manager in the film industry. If there's any possibility that filming might cause disruption in neighbourhood, even for one day, the city of Vancouver requires us to consult residents, including going door-to-door canvassing concerns. I live in the immediate vicinity of Seventh and Arbutus site. No one from BC Housing or city has called or knocked on my door to see if I have any concerns about 129-unit low-barrier housing being operated in my neighbourhood for the next 75 years. When a movie is going to be filmed in a neighbourhood, part of my job is meeting with the Vancouver Police Department to seek advice, obtain approval, or plan the film safely without any undue impact on the neighbours. BC Housing and the city claim that they consulted the VPD regarding Seventh and Arbutus project, but the VPD has confirmed that they have never been consulted. You would think a project large, this large and this impactful, would require some consultation with our police department. At minimum, what do you think? How can we minimise safety concerns? A temporary film shoot in the neighbourhood requires police input on a one-on-one consultation with affected residents, yet 129 units of low-barrier supportive housing has nothing. Since the project was announced, BC Housing and the operators have steadfastly declined all requests to advise what supportive services there will be. City councillors ran into the same brick wall last night on this issue that the neighbourhood has been banging its head against the wall for the last 16 months. Supportive services will be critical for the project's residents, but councillors learned last night that this is deemed an operational matter that does not have to be decided until the building is not only constructed but occupied. In the meantime, whether there is support in a supportive housing is apparently none of the city's business, none of our business. This January, with the permission of the BIA, I spent three very rainy days going door-to-door to almost 300 businesses on West Fourth, Broadway, and Arbutus, talking to the business owners about the Seventh and Arbutus project. Their response was overwhelmingly in opposition to the project, to the tune of 90%. The remaining 10% did not voice support, but rather just didn't have the time to talk to me. This past weekend, I went back to these businesses, over Saturday and Sunday, to ensure they knew about this public hearing. Many remembered me from January, and the response again was opposition to the same degree as in January. You have already heard previous speakers, moving on, you have already heard previous speakers speak about the continuing problems with the Marguerite Ford Apartments in Olympic Village, the 147-unit low-barrier supportive housing complex for the homeless population. Most Vancouverites know someone or know of someone who has moved out of the Olympic Village because of this intolerable to live near the Marguerite Ford. I have a coworker that did just that. Open drug use continues outside Marguerite Ford. The neighbouring stratus pay private security to protect their common properties and residents. Daily visitors result in 50% more people being on-site every day on top of the 147 residents. Visitors cause disruption and can jeopardise tenancy to the residents. Disregarded needles are everywhere outside the building, in alleys, and in common property of neighbouring buildings. The operator is only responsible to clean up human faeces that are actually on the project's property, not on the adjacent sidewalks or alleys, calls me to the city to clean up human waste to go unanswered. In 2017, a resident of Marguerite Ford died in his suite, and his body was not discovered for 17 days. This is what you call supportive housing. Alison Danette, city of Vancouver senior planner for supportive housing, and Celine Mabouls, city of Vancouver director of homeless services, both attended the community advisory committee meeting for Marguerite Ford in November 2021, where the ongoing problems at Marguerite Ford were discussed in details. Yet these two senior civil servants were here last night in support of this city plan to build the same kind of project here at Seventh and Arbutus. Taxpayers should not be fleeing their neighbourhoods because of a failed supportive housing. Taxpayers should not be fleeing their neighbourhoods because of a failed supportive housing project that follow a model that is contrary to the science and do not provide the kind of service that people suffering mental illness and addiction require and deserve. This low-barrier congregate housing model fails both people living in these projects and the people living around them. The Community Advisory Committee that was set up at Marguerite Ford Apartment is still going nine years after the opening because the city operator and B C Housing can't fix the problems. This is a failed model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You do have questions, councillor Hardwick.
Uh, thanks very much, Sean. Um, you mentioned that you believe that the V P D hasn't been consulted. Uh, how do you know that? Uh, did someone tell you that or how did you put that together?
I emailed, I emailed everybody regarding this project when we first received the flyer. And the V P D did a Zoom meeting between, uh, my wife and our strata. Uh, my wife's a much better speaker than I am. And, uh, I was in the house and the V P D said right off the bat, let me make it very clear, we were not consulted on this project, we have not approved it. And they're basically saying that they may have received a notice about something, but they were certainly not consulted.
Do you have a record of that that you could share with, with us?
Uh, I would, yes. I mean, the notes from the Zoom meeting and who we spoke to, absolutely.
That would be great, yeah. We'd like to see the details on that. Uh, thank you very much. Sorry, I'm feeling a little under the weather this evening.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, those are, those are all your questions, um, Sean, but we do appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have speaker number twenty, actually, um, we're going to hear from speaker number twenty-three and then we're going to take a five-minute bio break. We have been going for over two hours and so I just want to, um, give councillors a chance to, um, take a quick break. So we'll go with speaker twenty-three, Tanner David.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Okay, um, hello, council. My name is Tanner and I'm a renter currently living in the Kitsellano area. Um, this is my first time engaging in the public hearing process and I'm calling in today to voice my support for the proposed supportive housing development at Eighth and Arbuthnotus. I believe that this development is well-suited for the area, especially following last week's approval of the Broadway Plan. This particular building will be in line with the rest of the future development along the corridor, if not substantially smaller. Furthermore, with the future completion of the Broadway's Skytrain Line, this location will allow residents to leverage easy transit access to connect with family, friends, employment opportunities and other services across Kitsellano and much of the rest of Vancouver. Every neighbourhood in Vancouver is affected by the current lack of access to deeply affordable housing. Kitsellano is no exception to this and should not be treated as one. Vancouver is in dire need of additional supportive housing capacity and Kitsellano has an important part to play in solving this crisis. Ultimately, we should not be having a public hearing like this to decide whether those at risk of homelessness will be allowed to have housing. I urge council to approve this desperately needed supportive housing project that will not only assist those facing homelessness, but could very well save the lives of our neighbours that are most in need. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions, but we appreciate you calling in. Okay, council, we're going to take a five-minute, uh, quick break. So we'll come back at twenty minutes past, actually six minutes, so twenty minutes past eight. Check in on quorum, if councillors are there, if they can turn on their video.
I got, uh, one, two, three, four in the chamber. We have five, six, seven, yes, you have quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. So, uh, we will be continuing on with our speakers. Next on the list is speaker number twenty-four, Justine Taylor.
I'm just checking, Chair Bly. And I believe speaker twenty-four is not, no, she is not here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, speaker number twenty-five, Scott L.
No, speaker twenty-five, I was told, um, their battery on their phone was causing some issues, so they may call back later on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, speaker number twenty-six, Serena Jackson.
Yes. Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Serena Jackson and I'm a renter in Vancouver and I am in strong support of this project. Housing is a human right and we have a responsibility to build homes for those who need them. We know we need more social housing. This proposed project is on city-owned land and will not displace any residents. If the city doesn't build social housing on vacant land that it owns, where else will it build it? Some of the opponents to this project have submitted stigmatizing comments, crying out against changes to the social fabric of the neighbourhood. They fear that the residents of this building will be dangerous to the community and some argue that supportive housing should be contained to the downtown east side. We cannot continue to kettle the people who have the least in our city and to make Vancouver a truly inclusive city where people of all incomes belong, we need projects like this one to go ahead. I have heard opponents of this project declare that the support that Eighth and Arbuthnotus will be insufficient. This is misinformation. The supports will be established based on the tenants' building and we're not at that stage of the project yet. I am a support worker in a building in Mount Pleasant that is very similar to the proposed project. The building I work in is one block from a park and two blocks from a school. The tenants at my workplace often volunteer in the community garden and at community events and they're very friendly when they meet neighbours outside the building. I can say with confidence that the residents have not made the neighbourhood unsafe. And I can also say that having a safe, clean, affordable, supportive place to live is life-changing and life-saving. The residents that I work with are part of a two-year transitional housing programme. The goal is to help people stabilise and recover from the physical, emotional and mental trauma of being unhoused or living in unsafe housing. And at the end of the programme, we aim to find long-term housing that fits the tenants' needs. Finding long-term housing for our tenants has always been challenging and over the past few years, it has become nearly impossible. Vancouver has a dire shortage of supportive housing. We know that Vancouver needs to build all kinds of housing all across the city so that people can have safe and appropriate housing. Council, I urge you to approve this project. And if it's at all possible, please bring back the eleven units that were cancelled because of shadows. How can we give up eleven homes for people who desperately need them, homes that are fully funded by all levels of government for fear of shadows? I don't want to take up too much more time out of this marathon hearing, so I will leave you with what James Forrest said, pardon me, James Forrest said last night. Supportive housing is not the cause of problems in the neighbourhood, it's the solution. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Um, you have no questions, but we appreciate you calling in. Next, we'll hear from speaker number twenty, uh, twenty-seven, Clara Prager.
Yes, Clara Prager.
Great, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Hi, Mary Council, uh, my name is Clara Prager and I'm a project lead with Women Transforming Cities. As a resident of Vancouver, a city that is dealing with multiple deadly crises, I'm strongly in support of this project because it will save Vancouverites' lives. You heard earlier, uh, in this hearing from my colleague Macabre about why women transforming cities, based on our extensive engagement with community organisations and equity-deserving residents from across the city, supports this rezoning. Uh, the reason we heard so consistently about the desperate need for social and supportive housing is because people are dying from homelessness in the city. Councillors, you have a responsibility to save people's lives by approving this initiative. That may sound stark, but it's what we've heard for months of community engagement from some of your most at-risk constituents. Opponents may say that this is not the right location because it's near a park and a school. Let me remind you that you approved a nearly identical project a few weeks ago at Knight and King Ed that was also near a school and a daycare. The way we've designed our city means that all housing is near parks and schools. And housing should be near parks and schools because those are things that residents need to live a good life. If we don't build housing near parks, where will we build it? It would be inhumane to relegate low-income housing to parts of the city that don't have any green space. Opponents may say that this is not the right mix of tenants, uh, but I'd like to remind you that the project was initially slated to ha, to be one hundred percent shelter rate and was already reduced to only half that in order to accommodate some groups' concerns. All of these homes are crucial to solving the housing crisis, but it's the ones with supports that will make the biggest difference to the people who are suffering the most. I'm asking you not to further reduce the number of shelter rate units because we need all these homes to address the scale of homelessness, of the homelessness crisis residents of Vancouver are facing. Opponents may say that this housing is not family-oriented, but I would say that all housing is family-oriented. The, the tenants who will live here have families. Stable housing will allow them to reconnect with their loved ones. They may even allow parents to regain custody of their children. It will mean that people with complex health conditions will be around long enough to be present at family events because through stable housing, they'll have access to healthcare and that will save their lives. Each room includes a kitchen where tenants can cook a meal for their family. It includes amenity spaces where they can invite their family over and proudly show them their beautiful new home. Again, all housing is family-oriented because access to housing saves lives and keeps families together. Opponents may say that this isn't the right model or that it's warehousing people and will somehow cause them harm. No one is forcing anybody to live here. It's, I'd suggest that, uh, these future tenants can probably decide for themselves whether being housed here is preferable for them and that we give them some agency and not preemptively make that decision on their behalf. If somehow we find the building empty, I'm sure we can certainly find other people who would love these studio apartments. Opponents may say that there aren't enough supports in the building. I was personally very impressed hearing from the applicant about how they approach, uh, providing supports for tenants and how they tailor it to, uh, whoever ends up in the building. They are professionals, they have decades of experience. I trust them to do their jobs and I ask that you do too. This project does have significant supports and, um, those supports will help people get back on their feet. A vote against the rezoning would be a vote to deny these supports to people who really need them. Voting to reduce the number of units is a vote to reduce the number of people who have access to these supports. Opponents will say that this housing, uh, might hurt women, but I'd point out that the housing crisis disproportionately impacts women, especially racialised women and especially women with disabilities. Furthermore, the project is aligned with addressing the calls for justice of the National Inquiry into Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. The inquiry identifies poverty, insecure housing, homelessness and barriers to services as a contributing factor to violence against Indigenous women, girls and two-spirit people. Yesterday, I spoke to a journalist about why women transforming cities supports this project. I told him that the timing of this hearing is very poignant. It's currently the one-year anniversary of the heat dome that killed hundreds of people in this province, including many Vancouverites. Many of those deaths could have been prevented if people had access to safe housing, like the air-conditioned units that this building will provide. One year later, councillors, you have an opportunity to take a tangible action to prevent that loss of life from occurring again. Please do the right thing. Please bring one hundred and twenty-nine safe, fully-funded homes with life-saving support services to this city. Your constituents' lives depend on it. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Uh, there are no questions, but we appreciate, uh, you calling in.
Thanks.
Next, we're going to move to. Next, we're going to move to speaker number 28, Erin LaRocque. Speaker 28.
Hello.
Erin. Hi there. Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you. You're welcome to start as soon as you're ready.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. My name is Erin and I'm a Kitsalana resident living a few blocks from this coast housing site. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for this rezoning. I will say that I'm sick tonight, so I'm sorry if my voice is not as clear as it normally would be. When I was thinking about tonight, I was initially at a bit of a loss on what to say. Because fundamentally, the fact is that we needed more housing in Vancouver years ago. And given the current situation, it feels imperative to act with absolute urgency. So I'll start with the critical need for housing in Vancouver. I know that this is repeating what has already been said, but it is worth repeating because that need is why we are all here today. In the most recent homeless count, over 2,000 residents in Vancouver identified as being unhoused. As others have noted, this figure is widely accepted as an under-count. It's equally important to recognise that this count took place before the widespread shutdowns from COVID-19 and before the devastating heat dome last year, mentioned by some councillors yesterday, both which disproportionately affected and affects people without stable homes. Still, I do want to share a few highlights from the report. 69% of respondents said that housing affordability or financial challenges were the cause of losing their housing. 48% or almost half of respondents had experienced homelessness for the first time before they were 25 years old. 36% of respondents were in the care of the ministry as children or youth. And 39% of respondents were Indigenous, a vast over-representation compared to just 2% of Vancouver's total population. So like the previous speaker, I guess I would just like to call attention to the fact that I feel it is disingenuous framing to say that this housing does not support families, because families are more complicated than that. People who were children in a care are from families, young people are from families and everyone in need of housing is part of a family, even if it doesn't currently look like a nuclear one and may not. Further, the reality is that there is a dire need for all types of housing around the city, including for people living alone. I was very glad to see the recent rezoning for the proposed women's housing on West 13th and Canby moved forward. And this proposal would provide an equally important addition to the lack of housing we are facing. On a volunteer basis, I have helped move unhoused community members into SRO housing. It is no secret that a lot of the existing SRO stock is very old, often with shared bathrooms and kitchens, which can provide less of a sense of security. In a heatwave, some of these buildings are poorly ventilated and extremely hot. We desperately need new self-contained studio units like these that can improve on and replace some of the existing SRO stock. Finally, in preparation for tonight, I was reading many of the comments submitted in opposition to this project. Several commenters expressed concerns that there are not adequate supports or services within the community to support the people that would live in this building. Beyond the support that, as many others have accurately noted, will be in the building itself and that already exists in the community, I was, I was wondering, what if instead of decrying the lack of support, what if those in the community with the time and resources to do so strengthened them? We've talked about some of those great initiatives already here tonight. We already have so many good things to build on in Kitsalana. What if we extended community-run pantries, the kits shower programme and built on the excellent programmes that places like Kits House already run? Over the past several months, a grassroots collective of some neighbours have come together and we have met many Kitsalana residents that are invested in exactly this kind of community building. We know from existing data that after six months, about 94% of residents of supportive housing remain housed. I also want to be very clear that when we do talk about increasing shadows for a few days of the year and about site geometry, we are weighing shade against housing for human beings and that these are people in our communities that are living without housing as we speak. So in closing, I just do want to make sure that council knows that many of us in the community are strongly supportive of this proposal and deeply committed to supporting its success if approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no questions, but thank you very much for calling in to council.
Thank you.
Next, thank you. Next, we have speaker number 29, Scott Delang Boom.
Opportunity to speak with you today. I'm calling to ask you to support the project. It's no secret, everyone agrees that the city really needs these units. This is the type of housing that, there's pretty much consensus we need. And that there will always be requirement and there will always be some pushback when it comes to these sorts of things. But we have an opportunity here tonight to actually move a concrete proposal forward, not a hypothetical, perfect rezoning, which there never will be one, but a one that will mean real housing units for real people that will get built and meet people's needs in the immediate future. And for that reason, I strongly want to see this go ahead. Additionally, issues have been raised around the lack of, or the loss of a couple of units due to shadowing. And I think it's a unfortunate case where that has been lost and I would encourage that to be revisited and brought back because we have a housing crisis, we don't have a shadow crisis in the city. And there are real trade-offs here and I think the city made the wrong one when it came to prioritising a little less shade, which, I don't know if you know this, has been pretty hot recently and shade's been kind of welcome. I don't know why we're so intent on minimising it. But regardless, the city prioritised a little less shade compared to 11 additional homes that there's pretty much universal agreement on of the city needing. And for that reason, that decision should be reversed and I would like to see kind of future policy changes to readjust the city's priorities on that going forward. I will just leave with this. I've spoken to council a lot on a bunch of different housing projects. I came before you on the First and Clark Social Housing Project and I heard a lot of the same complaints being raised. And we will never find a site anywhere in the city where there will be zero issues raised with it. So we shouldn't try to aim for the perfect project, we should aim for the ones that meet the needs of the city and actually advance the substantive policy goals, which this project does. Thank you.
And thank you very much. There are no questions. Appreciate hearing from you tonight. We'll move to speaker number 30, Catherine Cheps. Hi there, we can hear you. Please, yes, we can hear you. You're free to start when you're ready.
Great, thank you. As I mentioned before, my name is Catherine Cheps. I live in Vancouver and I'm calling tonight in strong support of the proposed housing project at 7th and Arbuthnot. I grew up in Kitsalana and I've managed to stay in this neighbourhood as an adult, something that's a pretty rare situation to find and something that was only possible for me and my family because we managed to secure a spot in a housing co-op a few blocks away from the home where I grew up and a few blocks away from the proposed project site. As I've been lucky to find non-profit housing in this neighbourhood, I still call to speak up in support of this project. I support this project because it will provide safe, supportive, managed housing that is desperately needed on what is currently a city-owned vacant lot where no existing residents will be displaced. But the project is planned as a passive house project located right next to the new transit station and on the Arbuthnot Greenway is even better. It puts this project squarely in alignment with the stated, city's stated goals in both the Broadway Plan and when it declared a climate emergency. Approving this project is also in line with many councillors' stated commitments. Commitments I paid close attention to last election season and will be scrutinising again as we approach another one, namely to meaningfully address and reduce homelessness in our city and expand affordable housing options in all areas of the city. With these facts in mind, I'm a bit confused as to why this rezoning is up for contentious debate. It seems to me that this is a project clearly in the public interest. It is already supported and funded by all three levels of elected government, acting clearly in furtherance of the commitments they were elected to enact. The funding that has been assembled for this project makes it almost kind of a unicorn. This is available funding for a desperately needed cause for the kind of homes for which there is the deepest need and that is available not only to build the building but support its ongoing operations. I'm sure it has taken years of work from all the agencies and governments involved in getting the project to this point and to have that fall apart because of antiquated zoning would be a shame. Supportive housing belongs in every community across the city, especially where it can be located on city land, because every community includes people that may need support, whether now or in the future. I love that this project will be right down the street from me and not being squeezed in on an industrial site or some far corner of the city. Those who are given the opportunity to be housed here will get to build community with the diverse neighbours that already call Kits home. This project is also a great way that city council can take a concrete step towards challenging the inequities that have for too long been exacerbated in our city and city planning processes. The fears and anxieties of housed people cannot be considered a valid argument against meeting the needs of the city's most vulnerable residents, especially in the face of three compounding, interlocking and deadly ongoing crises, namely the lack of affordable housing, the COVID-19 pandemic and the drug toxicity crisis. There is enough for all of us if we can only share. Approving this rezoning does not take wealth, warmth, privacy or housing away from any existing Kits neighbour. It merely extends an invitation and an opportunity to access these things for too few lucky new neighbours. For all of these reasons, as well as just reasons of basic human dignity, I urge city council to approve the rezoning for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no questions, but we appreciate you calling in tonight.
Thank you.
I just want to alert council that we did have a caller call in who was having a phone malfunction of some sort. And they are back on the line and unless there's objections, I would move to speaker number 25, Scott L. And hearing none. Speaker number 25, Scott L.
Hi, hi there, council. Thanks for letting me get in. I am speaking to you today to urge you to oppose the rezoning application. The reason for this is multi-fold. However, my primary reason is rooted in science. I worked for a science-based medical health corporation and I root for science. When we were in the midst of the pandemic, we were asked to trust the science. Canadians did. We stayed home, we masked up, we got our vaccines and we got through it. Now, we need to tackle the opioid, mental health and homeless crisis and we need to do the same as we did with COVID-19. We need to trust the science. At this time, the science of Julian Summers and his colleagues is what we have and we spent $120 million getting it. I've listened to Julian Summers speak on several occasions about his research on housing models for the best of those exiting homelessness. The government spent $120 million of taxpayers' monies on his research to find a resolution to the homelessness problem. And it found a better housing model, a recovery-oriented model that allows people choice where they want to live, in non-stigmatising, inclusive buildings and in buildings that allow to integrate into the community and better connect to children and loved ones. Housing 129 individuals that are, that are all hard to house because of mental health issues, substance use issues or other challenges is not rooted in the science. And it ultimately sets the tenants and the neighbourhood up for failure. One only has to look to the downtown east side to see failings of congregant housing models. The model is financially costly, but is also leading us down a path away from civility and dignity. The other day, I had the pleasure of meeting an Indigenous woodcarver who is experiencing homelessness. And he told me he would not step foot in one of these congregant buildings because of the dangerous elements within them. He doesn't feel safe there. He prefers to stay in hotels or on the street. Like Dr Summers, he feels the culture of the streets and the culture of these buildings is not a safe place for him. A no vote is a vote for a better model for everyone and a model that we can implement now with existing and new rental stock. A no vote is a decision based on evidence and science that will lead us down a new path and help to put us on, put our city on a new road to recovery. Given all the issues with this proposal, its model, its size, its location, proximity to other vulnerable populations, the lack of support in the neighbourhood, et cetera, et cetera, council must not rubber stamp this deal. Show us that democracy is still alive and this isn't a done deal, as we've heard over and over again. Force BC housing back to the drawing board and make them, make them come up with something better. Show us democracy is alive and that it isn't a done deal. There's also lots of social housing in Kitsalana. We can accommodate more than 129 people experiencing or at-risk housing, but we want a project that works from the start. One of the things that bothers me the most when I look at the way the science is, I see online and people start to attack the science or what we, the way we go forward. We need more of it, not to attack it. This reminds me of the tobacco industry where we started to attack the cigarette rebat or we attacked wearing mask during COVID. We attacked vaccines. Don't attack the science. Listen to the science, follow it and do more of it. Thank you.
And thank you. Do you have questions? Council boy.
Thanks so much. I am just hoping to clarify. I read the Dr Summers' study last night and my understanding of it is that it says pretty clearly that both congregate and scattered site formats achieved markedly superior housing stability compared to a business-as-usual approach over a 24-month follow-up period. So I'm just hoping to clarify why, what you articulated and what we've been hearing seems so out of line with the, with the summary of the report as I understand it.
Well, I, personally, I feel that what's happening is they have a business-as-usual approach. And whenever someone asks for change and brings in change, it's difficult. You know, you've got to get people together. You've got to go through these meetings like we're doing right now where we're sitting on hold and running out of battery and doing all these things that are frankly tough. But I think we are in a tough spot, you know, we are facing, facing a crisis. And when you do this sort of thing, you have to do the right thing or all you do is go down the wrong path and you have to come back at some point.
Okay, I'm just hoping to clarify because you were saying that the science says that this approach doesn't work and as I understand it, this study says that a congregate approach produces better outcomes than, than not providing housing.
Dr Summers, my understanding from the research, Dr Summers' research is that, you know, a building such as this, 129 units, all with these people that are suffering mental health issues, you know, basically imports the street culture into the building and doing a model that is, you know, a smaller scale, moving them out into the community where they can better integrate, they can bring their loved ones into the building, they can, you know, have their children come in at certain points and they can get jobs. This is a better model, is my reading of his research and when I listen to him.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. That's not what I'm seeing, but I think Dr Summers has signed up too, so I'll wait and ask him.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Those are all your questions. Appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number 31, Lacey Beck.
Hi, good evening.
Hi there, we can hear you. Please feel free to start when you're ready.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I very much appreciate the chance to speak tonight and recognise the time you're putting in listening to speakers this evening. I have been asked to read a letter that has been submitted already to council and confirmed received on behalf of the author, a senior who is very uncomfortable speaking on this issue publicly. I will not be using her name. I appreciate city council continuing to work on the homeless crisis. I am writing in to you today as a former coordinator of second-stage housing for battered women, a former volunteer for the John Howard Society and a retired frontline worker on the downtown east side where I have lived and worked for 19 years with my family. While I am pleased that the city is considering offering the hard-to-house accommodations outside of the downtown east side, I do not support BC Housing's proposed model to build a 13-storey, 140-unit facility. Note, I know this is now 129 units. Continuing on. As a former desk clerk at Carl Rooms, at BC Housing owned a tier-a-managed building, I can tell you that unless there is a drastic overhaul of policies and practices to I can tell you that unless there is a drastic overhaul of policies and practices, the charming neighbourhood of Kits will cease to exist. My former place of employment has around 40 units. PHS provides support and there is 24/7 staff. The majority of tenants were highly addicted. Many suffered from mental health challenges. Prostitution and drug dealing were tolerated. During a 24-hour shift, the building would receive hundreds of guests, many to party or score. My manager was so frightened of Mad Mike, a health angel enforcer, that he allowed him to commandeer a tenant's room for six weeks. Needless to say, the whole tenant population and staff felt under siege and violence in the building increased fourfold. The same could be said for child abusers. There were two male pedophiles that were tenants. I caught both of these men with teenage boys in their rooms. One boy was half-thrust. Strathcona Elementary was a block away. BC Housing's Arbutus Plan puts 129 units right next door to an elementary school. First of all, I would plead with you to reconsider the number of units to kettle a large population that's hard to house. Dr Summers is right. Congregating large numbers of homeless at one location imports street culture into the building. In fact, at Carl Rooms, with only 42 units, street culture ruled the building. A tiee article by Jen St Dennis showed we received 12 9-room calls per room in one year, and the link is available in the letter submitted. And second, BC Housing should not be throwing individuals together willy-nilly under the label of "hard to house". Granular assessments of each and every tenant's history applying for housing is paramount to ensure the safety and security of tenants, staff and neighbours. Please consider building a smaller model. It hurts like hell to see so many people suffering, to have criminals running amok, taking advantage of people.
Caller, caller, caller. Caller, I need to just caution you, I understand, are you reading someone else's letter?
I am, it was submitted, yes.
Yeah, okay, well, you're going to have to do your best to filter because we need to stick to the merits of this particular application. And I know it's difficult when you're reading somebody else's account of the facts, but there is, the content of what you share needs to not stigmatize future tenants of any application that's not, that was cautioned at the beginning of our meeting by our legal team. And I think you've gone, this letter is reflecting comments that are not appropriate for this public hearing. So you're welcome to share your own personal views. I gave you a lot of runway there, but I'm going to ask you to just stick to your own personal opinion and speak to the merits of this application.
That's fine, I can finish there. Her letter, as a frontline worker, I felt was extremely important and they know better than anyone else the experience. And I agree with what she wrote and I am in opposition of this project. And thanks for letting me continue and read it as far as you did.
You do have questions from Council Kerbyang.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll be brief because I'm losing my voice, I can't really ask many questions, but Council has received a lot of correspondence and I didn't catch, I'd like to identify that letter. Can that be resented to Mayor and Council, please?
Absolutely. I thought it was on the website, but I could email it directly to you if you would like or what's the best way to get it into your hands?
Yeah, I think the clerk can let you know the right email for Mayor and Council. And can you assist Chair, my voice is going?
Yes, so Council Kerbyang is correct. You can submit your letter to the clerk and the clerk will distribute that letter to all of Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
You do have more questions? Council Fry.
So I just want some clarification because I actually live quite close to Carl Rooms and I'm very familiar with various proximities to Strathcona Elementary. So you're not familiar with Carl Rooms per se, you're just reading a letter from somebody who works there or worked there?
Somebody who worked there for many years, who requested, who wrote this letter to Council and asked me to read it for them.
Right, but you have no ability to verify that or really speak to the veracity because it's not your personal experience?
No, the speaker is more than happy to speak to individual councillors on the subject if you would like to speak with her.
Sure, yeah, yeah, but I mean, where I'm going with this is I'm not sure that it's really a fair comparison, given the context of Carl Rooms, given the extenuating circumstances. We're quite literally talking about apples and oranges. So I'm wondering if you feel that that's an apt comparison to this which hasn't been tenanted, which is not 100% supportive, which is not in the same kind of contextual environment with, you know, the various complications of that particular block and then transposing it to this project. Do you think that's an accurate representation?
Absolutely. We're comparing an SRO with supportive housing. It's not the same thing and I completely realise that, but this is somebody who has had considerable experience working with BC Housing and operators and wanted to express her multitude of experience and what she saw and what she does not want to see and what her recommendations are for the site at Arbutus. And she was just giving her background and that's basically where that came from. I'm not comparing that site with the site on Arbutus. This is just some of her experiences and then she's also giving you her recommendations, which I think is fair.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I guess I want to counter that with my own kind of context and experience and having lived in that particular neighbourhood for 30 years, know lots of people who have worked in supportive housing in the neighbourhood and they're not all the same. And there's, so you could pick out like the worst-case scenario and compare, but I just want to put another lens to that comment because I think it deserves some more context and I don't think that this is an appropriate comparison to. But I'll leave it at that because it's not a debate.
Eric, can we please stick to questions? We have a lot of speakers ahead of us.
Got it, thank you. Council Kerbyang, got it. Okay, so we're going to move on. Any questions? Council Fry?
That's fine, yeah.
Point of procedure, Chair?
Yes, Council Carr.
Yep, thank you. There was a comment made by the speaker about the person whose letter she was reading being willing to talk to individual councillors. I would just like you to clarify that we are in a public hearing and no one can contact an individual councillor. Every councillor, all councillors have to hear the same information through this process. So could you just clarify that for the speaker, please?
Yes, so thank you, Council Carr. As mentioned a number of times, any comments that are to be sent to anyone councillor need to be sent through the clerks for public record.
Yes, and I will resend that letter to the clerk for sure.
Thank you. Anything else, Council Carr?
No, that was just my point. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Council DeGenova.
Oh, I was waiting patiently just to ask the same question of you, Chair, but Council Carr already asked and I guess as a point of procedure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So that's all the questions for you, Speaker. We'll be moving on to Speaker number 32. Thank you very much. Speaker number 32, Pam Rosengrin.
Can you hear me?
Hi there. We can. You're welcome to start.
Great, great. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Pam Rosengrin. I was born in Vancouver, lived in the East End and the West End. I now live in Kits. I oppose this rezoning application. It's not the right housing model for the residents nor for the neighbourhood. And after yesterday's proceedings, it's clear it's not ready for consideration. First, let me tell you about my personal experience that comes from over 20 years of living across the street from a Salvation Army, high-density, 168-bed men's shelter. They had staff, security and residential programmes. Yet nearly every night and sometimes several times a night, police or ambulance were called to the centre. Sometimes for illegal activities including fistfights and drug use, other times for overdose and health events. Sometimes the calls were for the residents, other times the calls were for those that prey on or just hang with the residents on the street. What has been hap-
Speaker, I'm going to just caution you again. So what we're dealing with here is we're, we need to be speaking to the direct application that's before us and the aspects contained within this application, including the housing agreement and the other factors. I'm not sure if you were on the line when we were briefed by legal. You have to be, so speakers must speak to the merits of this application and you can of course have your own personal experience, but what's required is that you reflect that into this direct application. Otherwise, what happens is there is, it veers into the arena of stigmatizing people who may live in this building and that's not tolerated in a public hearing.
Oh, okay, I didn't think, I thought this was relevant because it was a very similar living situation that we're proposing in this application. So I thought my past experience would be something that the Council would want to take into consideration.
If you can connect it to aspects of this application, then it is, then it is something you can share, but you need to be connecting it directly to this application.
I'm talking about the high density. So the fact that this was a high-density, 168-bed shelter that had residential programmes with it make it very similar and in my opinion, very relevant. My experience is very relevant. I also talked to, as others have, that this was very similar to what happened at the Marguerite Ford Olympic Village. The police here in Vancouver have had a whopping increase in calls when this opened many years ago and it has yet to stabilise anywhere between pre-social housing levels. So that is very similar. I also want to talk about the probability of the, from my experience, that we're not talking just about the residents that are in the shelter, these kinds of, in these housing places, because very, very often, they garner visitors, friends, and the population that will be at this housing project is far greater than 129. Often you will see these folks could be on the street partying and in my experience, the city even had to power wash the street, the sidewalks, because there was so much activity happening on the streets because these visitors and people that actually prey upon the people that live in some of these housing opportunities come to visit. So that's what I wanted to say about my experience. I think it's relevant to what we're proposing here and wanted to bring it to your attention. I would also like to tell you that I spent several hours on the Greenway last Saturday. I heard people echo my concerns, including lack of commitment to support services. Many were very concerned with putting children across the street, not 500 metres away, across the street at risk in the elementary school and the toddler park. People agreed that we must take care of the vulnerable at this site, but this is not the right model and I think we can all do better for the less fortunate people here in Vancouver. Now, I'd like to tell you about what came out of yesterday's meeting and how a surprise was so many of the comments that were made by staff, the operator and BC Housing. The biggest was how many of the city's building rules the proposal breaks, such as setback and shadow. Weren't these approved in the Broadway Plan just days ago? Why isn't this project required to abide by the rules? Then surprisingly, we heard statements made far too often from the staff, BC Housing and the operator. It depends. We will wait and see. There are no best practices, standards or guidelines. This is an embarrassment. How can this city that has been operating for over 100 years not know these types of questions? And from an operator that boasts of their 51 years of services, who by the way, has no experience running a facility this big, it's almost 30% bigger than the largest that they've run. I'm just baffled by the fact that we get all this, it depends, we will wait and see, there's no best practices or standards. We then go on to learn that neither city staff, BC Housing nor the operator can challenge the findings of the taxpayer-funded research. Dr Summers' work that many have referenced here. It proved that housing people in mainstream rental buildings throughout the city get vastly superior outcomes to housing many people from suffering mental illness and addiction together. High-density congregated housing will fail the proposed residents and the surrounding neighbourhood. Even the province's own rapid response to homelessness recommends only 40 to 50 units. Why is BC Housing putting nearly three times that number at eighth in Arbutus? Next, we find in the fine print of the referral report, and I think Councillor Fry asked about this, that a minimum of 50% of the tenants will be sheltered at the rate of income, but nothing prevents it from being 100%. That is a concern. And my final point, the configuration of this modular structure cannot be changed for the life of the building. We heard yesterday that that was 60 to 85 years. It means that children will never be allowed to live with their parent, no matter what the research says about the importance of family reunification, nor the changes in the demographics of the homeless. My final statement is this proposal clearly is not ready for consideration. There are too many unknowns, too few commitments and too much evidence that it will fail. We can come up with a better model for this site that will be a success. Please reject the Arbutus and Eighth proposal.
Thank you very much. That is your time. There are no questions, but we do appreciate you coming to speak to Council. Next, we have Speaker number 33, Brian Godden.
No.
Thank you. Speaker number 34, Jonathan Ma.
Yes.
Yes, hi.
Hi there, we can hear you. You have five minutes, you're welcome to start.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I turned my notes here, I wasn't expecting. But, okay, good evening, dear Chair and Council. Firstly, thank you for your time and for your service and effort in trying to make things better for our city. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to call in. As mentioned, my name is Jonathan, I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm new to speaking at public hearings. Growing up in Marple, I'll admit that I didn't know what an SRO was or the difference between mental health-supported housing, addiction-supported housing or low-barrier housing. When I learned of this rezoning proposal, I decided to get the facts and as I started learning more, I couldn't in good conscience sit idly by. I have to speak up for the most vulnerable. I am not opposed to density. I am not opposed to supported housing. I am not opposed to a building with one, two, three bedroom units for a mix of different people, with a small percentage of units reserved for low barrier. A bonus would be space for a commercial daycare to replace the one that was previously located on this site. That is not what is being proposed here and that is why I am strongly opposed. This proposal is for up to 129 single occupancy-only units for the hardest to house. Minimum 50%, but could be a maximum of 100%. Low barrier with essentially no support. BC Housing's definition for support include laundry, one meal, injection space and medicine provision. As we heard yesterday, the details of support services are to be determined. To be very clear, I am not saying that everyone that would be housed here will have mental health or addiction issues or be those involved with crime, but without any rules or background check, there could be some who would. And that's actually one of the main points. There are dangers for those without to be housed alongside those with mental health and addiction issues. And for those residents that are suffering, to warehouse them and not provide services on-site or in the neighbourhood for treatment or recovery is cruel, inhumane and abusive. This proposal would essentially be putting people in prison without the locks and bars. They would be free to come and go, but without recovery and treatment, it would be difficult for them to ever leave on their own. And shouldn't that be the goal? Housing first or harm reduction is important, but without choice, being forced into congregated and segregated housing, we are actually making it more difficult for recovery and reintegration. I have spoken to a resident who lives in a building of comparable size in Olympic Village and he shared that he does not feel safe coming and going out of his own home. Another person I spoke to shared that her brother lives in mental health-supported housing of a much smaller size. She does not feel safe going to visit him as there are always people hanging around outside and they don't, quote, "respect her boundary". Imagine what is going to happen in a building that's over three times the size. But I don't blame people for hanging out in front of these buildings. If you or I lived in one of these buildings, we too would spend most of our time hanging out in front where we can actively- where we can actively socialize with others, because there's not much space to socialize anywhere else in the building. Keep in mind that the front of this building is less than 20 meters from a toddler park and preschool. I appreciate that some of the residents will be aware of this, but I don't think constantly yelling "kids on the block" is acceptable in this scenario. Humans are social beings, and this type of shelter is undignified. Research shows that a significant proportion of homeless people have children, and that reconnecting with their children and families is a huge factor in their recovery and reintegration community. Because this building will have a common drug use space, not public, as confirmed yesterday by BC Housing, but for common use of the residents, children would be prohibited from the building, meaning their own children cannot even visit them in their own home. Where is the dignity in that? This site is directly next door to Sancta Maria House, supportive recovery homes for vulnerable women escaping violence and recovering from mental health and addiction issues. Sancta Maria House is a great example of one of over 2,000 units of social and supportive housing in Kitzelano that are not stigmatizing and provide compassionate and real transformative change to the residents they house. They would have to shut down if this proposal were to be approved. If this proposal was for the downtown east side, I would still be calling in to oppose it because I've now learned that this type of congregate housing model is flawed and does not actually help improve the lives of the people it purports to. I disagree with comments that those in opposition of this proposal are the city's elite and privileged who just don't want supportive or social housing in their wealthy neighborhoods. The truth is, as I mentioned earlier, there are over 2,000 units of social and supportive housing in Kitzelano. The other truth is that, as another caller pointed out earlier, the surrounding neighborhood is full of rental buildings, cooperative housing and income-assisted housing, not wealthy homeowners who only care about their property values. I've spoken to people that live in these buildings and they all care very much about helping the homeless. They just want it to be successful from the start. I came across some timely advice today. I think we can all agree that we are not very good at predicting the future. We are very good at being aware of the urgency of the moment and familiar with our needs to deal with emergencies. And I agree that there is an emergency. Before we react though, it might be worth asking.
Sorry.
And then what happens?
I am gonna have to pause you. I'm terribly sorry. And that is past your time, but you do have questions from councillor De Genova.
Okay.
Go ahead councillor.
Thanks Jonathan. Just wondered, could you tell me, are you opposed to the units themselves, the supportive housing units, or the scale? I'm trying to understand. So if this number of units was broken up into several buildings integrated with, you know, low-end of market housing, supportive housing, but also, you know, market rental housing, as we've seen in other cases, would you be more supportive?
100% I would be calling into some more of that.
So it's not about the type of housing, it's about the distribution? That's, I'm just trying to understand sort of your opposition. It's about the distribution of the units in one building and kind of having these people feel like they live in the social housing building instead of everyone has the same kind of door? And nobody knows what anyone's situation is?
No, exactly. And I cut that part right out of my talk because as you can tell, I ran out of time with some issues at the beginning there. But I mean, I would encourage all the councillors to, and I think, you know, some of you have received it and some of you have read it, but Dr. Julian Summers, you may have heard of him, but a 30-page kind of report or kind of a study that he submitted to most, all levels of government. So yeah, I actually took the time and studied that. And absolutely, I'm not opposed, as I said, to to all those things, but we, I think it's something that we want to be successful. And I think there's clear scientific research, you know, and I think actually somebody said that scattered housing is an abstract theory earlier tonight. And I mean, it's not really a theoretical model, right? Like this was actually studied over many years with multiple different people. So I mean, it's real, it works. You know, Sancta Maria House is working. So I think we just want something that works. We don't want it to fail. We don't want, like, you know, we don't want "it depends." And that's what I was gonna say at the end, you know? We should ask, what happens? What's gonna happen five times? Ask ourselves. Five steps from here to there, like some of you councillors were asking yesterday. You know, how many staff would be onsite? What support services would there be? And if any of the answers to those steps involve, we'll deal with that later, or "it depends", then I strongly suggest that it might be worth taking a few more moments to reconsider the first step. You know, I do agree that there's an emergency, but, you know, I think we need to, you know, have some good answers before we.
So you're not opposed to housing these people in your neighborhood? You'd just like to see it at a smaller scale and in a more, in a way where people wouldn't happen to know that they are in these social supportive units or the low-end of market.
Exactly. Exactly. Not stigmatized, 100% I'm in support. And again, please read Dr. Summers' research. I didn't want to spend time that I didn't have talking about it. But you know, he recommends 5% based on his scientific research of units. We don't need to build new buildings. These 5% can be any buildings, right? I think a lady named Tracy called earlier and she lives in, you know, there are buildings around. If there's vacancies, we can hopefully sort out a way to capture those. But absolutely not. Absolutely, I support.
I have a minute and a half left, and I was hoping you might be able to tell me, if I'm putting you on the spot though, but can you tell me why you said Sancta Maria would have to close if this moved forward?
Yeah, absolutely. So because these women are basically escaping, you know, violence. A lot of them come from the downtown east side and other areas in Vancouver and metro Vancouver. But it's an absentee-based program, so they do, you know, have to make a commitment. You know, there are certain steps. And, 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 you know, because of that, and also, you know, they're escaping the violence, they're escaping their addiction. And the fear is that, or the concern, pardon me, is that if something like this gets approved, then literally right next door to them, right, like right next door, then they're gonna be exposed to something that they're gonna be trying to obviously get away from. And that's not gonna be supportive, and that's not gonna be supportive for their recovery. I think it's as simple as that.
Thanks so much. That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you councillor.
You do have more questions? Councillor Boyle?
Thanks. I actually just wanted to follow up with that last point to ask. Is there not drugs and alcohol in the neighborhood already? It's been a couple decades since I lived in Kits, but it, there certainly were then. So I guess I'm interested in why it's a concern in this building, but not in the many other buildings in the neighborhood?
I'm sorry. So the question is, why am I concerned about this one and not the other one?
Well, I guess your answer to councillor De Genova's question was about the residents in this building, or the residents in Sancta Maria being exposed to drugs and alcohol and that being a cause for possibly needing to close the building. And I guess I'm trying to understand, my sense is there is already drugs and alcohol in the neighborhood. So I'm trying to understand why this building would be, you would like to be dry, but not other homes in the neighborhood.
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. I mean, I think it's the proximity. This is literally next door, and I think as others have spoken to much more expertly than I have in terms of like the footprint and the, and the size of the lot. Like this one literally goes up right to the edges, in terms of, I don't know, I think it's called setbacks and things. So, you know, I think that's the concern. And to my, to my earlier point with sort of the, you know, like people are social, they wanna be hanging out out front, and this would just be right in their face, so to speak. And then, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, as I admit, I guess, like I didn't know until I learned about this proposal, I mean, I was sort of, I guess, you know, ignorant or blind to it, you know? Now that I, now that my eyes have been opened, then, you know, I kind of, I feel like I have to speak up. So that's probably why I haven't opposed it any other, you know, called in to oppose anything else like this type of low barrier, supportive housing. But frankly, there hasn't actually been anything. That's part of the point too. Nothing's been proposed like this at this scale with this model of, you know, low barrier. So I haven't really had the opportunity either, but I promise I'll be paying more attention. I've spoken to a lot of people in the neighborhood and.
Okay, sorry, I have limited time, and my question was specifically about why alcohol use in this building would be a problem if it's not in other buildings. But I will just leave it there. Thanks.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Those are all your questions, so thanks for calling in.
All right, thanks everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. And now we have speaker number 36, Rohana Rizell.
Wait, procedure chair? Oh, okay. It's not on my, on mine.
So speaker number 30, yes, sorry councillor De Genova, you're probably commenting. So speaker 35 is withdrawn. Speaker 36, Rohana Rizell.
No.
Okay, thank you. Speaker 37, Owen Brady.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Brian, council. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just great. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I strongly support this important proposal. My name is Owen Brady, by the way, and I'm a resident of Vancouver. I think the key thing here, that's quite analogous to the way we often talk about market-rate housing too, actually, is that the people who will eventually be tenants here are already our neighbors. They already live in Vancouver. They're already living in Kitzelano. Right now, they're just homeless or living in housing they can't afford. They will benefit here especially from access to Skytrain, which will allow them to fully participate in the opportunities of the city, such as providing many more employment opportunities and access to family and friends, you know, the tenant support network. It was said last night that the science doesn't support this project. I'm sure there are many alternative models that academics would like to pursue. Of course, that's not the question of this hearing. We all know that people will generally be better off in housing than on the streets, and that is the decision before you tonight. Council is not bound by its own precedent, but this is a quasi-judicial process, and council's recent precedents point extraordinarily in favor of approving this application. Council recently approved a Broadway Plan that envisions 20 and 30-story buildings in this immediate area. Council also approved a six-story moderate-income rental building in Kitzelano just last year, despite receiving over 500 letters of opposition. Thank you for that. Quite frankly, it would be hugely inappropriate and inequitable if Vancouver's whitest neighborhood could opt out of non-market housing by generally opposing things much more avidly than people in other neighborhoods do. Council unanimously supported an extremely similar application just two weeks ago, which was also next to a park and playground and very close to schools and daycares. This public hearing process is a terrible way to do public consultation and a terrible place to make policy. There's nothing wrong with the city doing consultation on its non-market housing policies, including on further development of the housing agreement for this project in specific. But this is a forum that gives people five minutes to say whatever they want about what is essentially a yes or no vote, not an informed solicitation of honest and sensitive feedback. Zoning was never intended to be done on a lot-by-lot basis. That's why they call it zoning and not lauding. I don't want to shame people for being apprehensive about this proposal, but there are constructive ways to address concerns, and by all means, council is free to follow up on these concerns as you see fit. But this is not the way. This does not lead to a better outcome, and it leads to a yes to housing or a no to housing and continued homelessness. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Sorry, you do have questions? Councillor Kirby Young?
Yes, just one question. What was the project I didn't catch that you referenced in Kitzelano? Could you just repeat that one for me, please?
Last year, it was the project at Fourth and Ballaclava, off the top of my head. I don't recall the address, but that was the crust street.
Okay, that was, was that a social housing building? I don't recall.
No, it was under the moderate-income rental housing. I think, the point I was trying to make is that, you know, you haven't, I don't think, done 20 moderate-income rental housing projects, but certainly you've done similar six-story moderate-income rental housing proposals, right, rezonings? And I don't think you've gotten nearly 500 letters of opposition at any of the others.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all your questions. Thanks very much for phoning in.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Next, we have speaker number 38, Sam Roberts.
Speaker 38 is, I'm just checking. No, no, he's not on the line.
Thank you very much. Speaker number 39, Catherine Anne Oberendorf.
Yes, I'm on the line.
Great, we can hear you. You.
Okay.
Yeah, I just turned down whatever's in the background there because you're gonna get an echo.
I'll just go in another room. It's the recording. So I am Catherine Oberendorf. I'm a resident of the city of Vancouver, and I strongly oppose the rezoning application for the 2086, 2098 West 7th and 2091 West 8th. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and certainly what stands before the city now is a very important decision. I believe that thoughtful and well-searched, independent and substantiated evidence should form the basis for all the decisions around social or supportive housing in our city. I urge the council to review the documents that have been presented by various experts in the field of addiction and mental illness to inform your decision prior to casting your vote. Because of the broad implications of this zoning plan, should the city get it right and reject the current rezoning proposal, the lives and well-being of so many individuals could be transformed. There are recovery models that are working around the world because they're based on science. That depends upon the reality that the primary consideration is not just housing or congregate living for those struggling with addiction and mental illness. Are the planned units a breach of human rights because of its focus on harm reduction rather than on recovery? Recovery-oriented housing is truth and reconciliation. It offers an opportunity for hope and for choice on the part of the residents so that they can integrate back into the society successfully. Sorry, just getting another page. Any plans approved by our council, in my opinion, must include all the documented supportive services in order to ensure opportunities for recovery are embedded in any planning and programs. At present, I understand that recovery has been substituted with a harm-reduction model. Neither BC Housing nor the MPA were prepared to detail the level of support that would be available to the residents. No ratio of residents to supportive staff has been committed to. Also, it's essential that the safety for the building's residents and the surrounding community is planned for and secured. If you, as city planners and city councillors, get it wrong, the planned and future residents, the neighboring established institutions such as schools, daycares, homes for women in recovery, city-designed parks and greenways, will all be negatively impacted. It would also impact other neighborhoods in Vancouver as this plan will be used as a model for others. Along with other concerned citizens, experts in the fields of recovery and support for the mentally ill and the addicted, I believe that any proposal to assist our homeless or needy would be welcomed anywhere in our city if the plan is reasonable and success is based upon integrating with the residents and the surrounding community. Large-scale congregate housing like this proposal have proven to be a disaster in Vancouver. Buildings, building a bigger facility is not a solution that would work for the residents or the other surrounding vulnerable populations in an extremely close proximity. MPA stated just last night that they have no experience supporting a facility with 120 residents. And so I say to you, just because we have a piece of property that the city owns, is that a reason to build on this particular location a building that's 12? to build on this particular location a building that's twelve stories high? Facilitating and allowing substance use in the proposed building on our beauties is an extreme barrier, in my opinion, to overcoming addiction and enabling recovery. In the model proposed, recovery is not in the plan, harm reduction is. How can you possibly plan to mix low-income residents with a minimum of fifty percent of those with addiction and mental health concerns and think that this would be a good plan? Stigmatizing homeless, perhaps addicted, perhaps mentally unwell people in these institutional-like establishments and not allowing them to make some type of choice on where they live and integrate is not providing care for their complex needs. Therefore, I challenge you to vote no, and I recommend that B C Hou- Housing make for a new plan and construct in service a five-to-six-story building, mixed-use social housing development with accommodations for low-income, single and family residents, elderly, disabled, homeless people, including five percent of the spaces designated for those with drugs and mental health issues who are seeking an environment that is committed to their recovery while enshrining support services into the model that is created. As city councillors, you have the power to genuinely make a difference. Please cast your no vote on this rezoning proposal as it currently stands. I thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns and to consider the observations and recommendations of people that you've listened to this evening. Thank you.
And thank you very much, uh, you do have questions, councillor Swanson?
Yeah, I'm wondering if you're aware of, um, we had a doctor, Daly, from B C H come and make a presentation to council a while back, and she was saying that um, when people went into abstinence-based treatment and then they came out and sometimes they would relapse, that they were way more, they, they were likely, more likely to die from poison drugs because their tolerance was reduced. So I'm wondering if you're aware of this, that these types of abstinence-based programs can result in more deaths from poison drugs?
I, I'm not aware of that, I am aware of a, a young person who I had known many years ago is currently living at the, a residence down at Seventh and Fur, which by my understanding is a, it's a, uh, housing situation for the needy that, uh, requires that people do not have an active drug life. And I've, he's lived there for the time that that situation has existed, and I think in many ways it's been successful, but I do not know about the, uh, situation that you described.
Yes, s- some people do prefer abstinence, but some, some don't. Do you believe that people don't deserve housing unless they agree to take abstinence-based treatment?
Are we supposed to stick to this application? I feel like we're having philosophical social conversations now. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I do have to agree that, um, we, at councillor Swanson, if you can keep your questions, uh, for this application, thank you. Those are all your questions, councillor Swanson?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, so those are all your questions, caller, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
So we are, um, at speaker number forty, and after the speaker will, um, have a sense, I think we'll only get to a few more speakers, so we'll, we'll make a, um, we'll make that clear, what number that is. Uh, right now, I think we have time for about four more speakers, right now, we're caller forty. Uh, so forty, Shannon DeVry- DeVries?
Uh, yes, Shannon DeVries, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you very much, you're welcome to start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you, good evening, council, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me and to the many other callers over a series of days regarding this topic. Uh, my name again is Shannon DeVries, and I'm a twenty-year resident of Kitsellano, and I live within just a few short blocks of this site at Seventh and our beauties. And I want it to be added to the record that I am strongly opposed to this development proposal and the project being presented for this site. Um, I consider myself very involved in my surrounding community, and I know this area very well. Me and my family frequent the parks, the greenway, the cafes, the community centers, the schools, the gardens, the bus loops, and the businesses that are within close proximity to where this building is being proposed. We know our neighbors and our neighborhood very well. And as I've heard prominent people within the housing development community say in the past, housing is a science, not an emotional decision. And that science has been done to show what works and what doesn't. Um, in the early days of finding solutions for homelessness, uh, folks were moved from encampments into a building, also previously known as S R Os, and we all know what resulted. Um, we don't need to look too far into the past to see how bad these kinds of congregate living situations can be. And we've all seen the many tragic news stories in recent years of what's taken place in these S R Os. Uh, for example, the fire at the Winters Hotel is only one recent, very recent tragic story. And though I have heard this proposed project, um, said that it's not technically an S R O, it is still a congregate housing model where housing individuals within a box where they can live solely as an individual. No couples, no families, no children. And in light of this information, now what's being proposed for this site? A low-barrier congregate housing building model for one hundred and twenty-nine of the hardest to house. Um, as a friend of mine who works as a social worker on the downtown east side for a housing operator and who is reluctant to speak for fear of compromising her job, has told me, low barrier is the problem right there, because there is no way out once you're in. Low barrier is a place where people can continue to use in a secure environment, but there's no what's next in low barrier. There's no hope for the future, you get a house, food, drugs, but that's it. The environment doesn't support improvement, and a lot of people on the street want to get better, and they don't want to be in an environment that feeds the problem. Which brings me to my question about why the research into homelessness, addiction, and mental illness that has already been done is being completely disregarded here. If housing is a science, and the science of housing has been done already with millions of taxpayer dollars spent finding a better solution to address homelessness, addiction, and mental illness, and the results were very clearly not congregating these folks all into a single building, then what is truly going on here? If it has already been proven time and time again that this model is not what's best, then how many more hundreds of nine-one-one calls, how many more fires, how many more deaths will it take to convince people of this city that this model for what's being proposed here does not work? It's not what's best for the residents that it's intending to serve, and it's not what's best for the surrounding neighborhood. So who does this serve? That's my question to you, council. Who benefits from this? I understand that there is money available now and time is of the essence to take advantage of the funds being offered up, but when has the pressure of money ever been a good reason to make a decision? Like I said, housing is a science, not an emotional decision. So with so many assurances and not actual commitment that will affect thousands of people for many years to come, why would we consider this? I can only think that this works for someone's political agenda so that they can easily say, "Look, what I've done, I've taken X amount of people off the street, done." This is not a good enough reason to push this project through. We are the residents of Kitsellano, and we know supportive housing as it already currently exists in many forms all around our neighborhood. We are an inclusive and caring community with all kinds of models that serve the community well. Ask us, and we will come alongside you to find what will work best for this site. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much, uh, there are no questions, but thank you for coming to speak to council. Next, we have, uh, speaker number forty-one, Richard Campbell.
No.
Thank you, speaker forty-two, Michelle Simick?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and councillors, my name is Michelle Simick, and I have a child who attends one of the seven schools in proximity to this proposal, and tonight I am speaking in strong opposition. There was some discussion last evening on the appropriate parameters for the success of supportive housing sites. I think it's important to note that in twenty seventeen, B C Housing itself outlined these parameters when it established and published framework guidelines for successful supportive housing design. Those guidelines clearly stated it should be between forty to fifty units each in size. Interestingly, this has been removed from the internet in the past three weeks, although I am happy to provide a screenshot of this to council if they so like. And speaking of successful supportive housing developments, I'd like to talk about a few. In twenty seventeen, Victoria City Council approved seventy-eight supportive housing and fifteen affordable rental housing units for adults fifty-five and older with low to moderate support needs. And this was across the street from an elementary school. There was a guarantee of at least three staff on-site twenty-four-seven, and the building would have a controlled entry. Potential tenants would be screened using the vulnerability assessment tool, or the VAT, and only those with no known history of violence and no current substance abuse issues would be housed at that location. It was with consultation with the school and community that B C Housing arrived at this solution. This concept was then tabled to council for their approval in that order. Four years later, news articles only touted its success. Let's go now to Pentictin. Council there prepared guidelines for identifying best locations for shelters and supportive housing across the city, including that buildings must be a minimum of a hundred and fifty meters away from K to twelve private and public school. In twenty twenty, the city of Nanaimo entered into a memorandum of understanding with B C Housing to provide a hundred and ninety units of supportive housing spread out over six sites with a target of forty to fifty units per site. Shortly after, councillor voted that the next round of social housing projects would include smaller supportive complexes with a maximum of twenty-five rooms and possibly dry or transitional housing. That vote was eight to one in favor. With these new parameters, council felt it would be an easier path of negotiating with staff, B C Housing, and even neighborhoods. They felt if they could promise sites that were proven to work, then they could also ask neighborhoods to share a responsibility in supporting social housing, which really is not only a fair ask, but one that doesn't put the burden on any one party, tenants, operators, providers, and neighborhoods would all succeed. As we've heard from several speakers, the west side of Vancouver is actually home to over two thousand buildings of social and supportive housing that operate cohesively with neighborhoods. And as the CEO of Coast Mental Health would agree, the reason for their success is their manageable size and their fit into the neighborhood. An earlier speaker tonight brought up Dunbar as a successful site. Again, no comparison here, that's fifty-one units, this is a hundred and twenty-nine. Most alarmingly, we heard from B C Housing yesterday that there are little to no parameters for success, that they can share with us for this site at this particular time. To say that leaves many people with little reassurance for the site's success is a massive understatement. And before I go, there is one more thing I would like to mention. As city councillors, the moment you vote yes on this rezoning application is the moment you relinquish your power to influence the size and the composition of this proposed project. If you have any doubt about whether the model B C Housing has put forward for this site will achieve the goals of recovery and community integration for the residents, and, not to mention, be safe for the citizens who live, work, and play close to this project, you must vote no and send the proposal back to B C Housing for revision. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, there are no questions, but we appreciate you calling in to council.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number, so just to be clear, we're only going to get to about three more speakers maximum, um, and, uh, the clerk is communicating with people on the phone if they're beyond that. Um, okay, speaker number three, forty-three, sorry, Meg?
No.
Thank you, speaker number forty-four, Jennifer Bradshaw?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi there, we can hear you, you have five minutes to speak to council, and you're welcome to start.
Great, thank you, hi, mayor and council, I'm Jen Bradshaw, uh, director of abundant housing Vancouver, here to speak in strong support of this project. Uh, recently, I helped to write an op-ed in favor of this project with, um, Tamara Lawyer. Uh, she's a trans woman with lived experience with homelessness and supportive housing. I was debating whether or not to invite her to speak today, um, and ultimately I decided not to. As much as I strongly believe that people like Tamara exactly the voices that should be centered in these discussions. The language used regards to homeless people in these chambers are often brutal and quite frankly vile. I really did not want to cause further harm to Tamara by asking her to be a part of this. Um, instead, I'd like to read some of her powerful writing. My last days on the street at forty-nine years old was in my sleep secure zone on a park bench in Cool Harbour. It had a lovely view with planes, cruise ships, cranes, and a nice affluent neighborhood. One day, a bottle of beer was smashed against my head by a screaming drunk man. As I desperately tried to get out of my sleeping bag, the man kept kicking me, he broke my leg. Out of the hospital, in a cast and crutches, I stooped around downtown ally, alleys. I was vulnerable, injured, impaired, and alone. Sorry, excuse me for a second. This is not uncommon with older residents in the downtown east side, solo, alone. I found refuge with Atira. I started with a great room in supportive housing. The Atira staff were nice and trans-friendly. I recovered much over the twelve years there, not just in health, legally, mentally, socially, and personally. I transitioned due to the great support. Now I'm independent, I work part-time with Atira and the Beyond the Street program whilst still studying astrophysics. Covid on top of everything else has ravaged the downtown east side. It's hard not to despair and fall back into depression. I feel stuck here with no opportunity or options. We need more options outside of the downtown east side. Well, supportive housing is far from perfect, it saves lives, lives like mine. This is why we should build this. The lack of the social, supportive, affordable housing throughout the city has limited the options of those struggling under poverty and oppression and concentrated misery. Please apor- uh, please approve this project.
Thank you very much, there are no questions, but we appreciate you coming to speak to council.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number forty-five, Daniel Lesnov.
Yes, yes, speaker forty-five should be on the line.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, Daniel Lesnov?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you can go ahead, uh, you have five minutes to speak to council.
Thank you very much, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Daniel Lesnov, and I've been a Kitsellano resident for over thirty years of my adult life, uh, and I'm very strongly opposed to this proposal. I have two school-aged daughters who attend public school at Kits, uh, and we, in, in Kitsellano, and we live near this proposed tower. I've never addressed city council in all my years of living here, but this proposal represents such a fundamental threat to the safety of my daughters that I have felt compelled to do so. I've always voted center-left, and, and indeed, I've voted for many of the council members that I am addressing today. I am astounded that any level of government could consider this proposed site to be an appropriate location for the hardest-to-house, mostly male, individuals. As you are well aware, the site is adjacent to Saint Augustine Elementary, which I have no connection to, by the way, uh, and a popular children's park. Less well-publicized, uh, the site is also several hundred meters from several other elementary schools, including Lord Tennyson and Saint John's, totaling nearly fifteen hundred schoolchildren in close proximity. This is one of the highest concentrations of elementary schools in the city. How does this proposal conform with the fact that the city bans marijuana dispensaries from being less than three hundred meters from an elementary school, while surely this project represents a far greater danger to the children in the- this project represents a far greater danger to the children in the immediate area?
Chair, I'm just gonna ask you, excuse me, councillors, thanks, I'm just going to, I, I'm about to jump on. I'm gonna ask you, speaker Daniel Lesnov, um, to, could you please focus your comments on the application, um, and not speculation, assumptions, or stigmatization about what would happen, um, based on who would live at this application? It, it's a fine line, but I need you to, to, to caution, uh, or to be mindful of your own language when speaking to this application.
Of course, thank you. Um, although, I, I will say that although the community happily includes and wants to include many different supportive housing structures, this proposal clearly does not have the support of the community, as can be seen from the controversy around this public hearing. Uh, for those who say that the local residents are overreacting and need to educate themselves or are just NIMBYs, uh, the future of our neighborhood, if this proposal is approved, can easily be seen at other supportive housing sites, for example, the well-referenced Marguerite Ford. Uh, my next-door neighbor works near there and has a front row seat to the huge increase in crime, numerous discarded needles around his office area, and human feces deposits at his office entrance regularly, and, uh, I see no reason why this proposal would, would be any different. Uh, I am a scientist, and to say this another way, this experiment has already been run more than once with clear negative results. This is not an experiment next to an elementary school that we should conduct. B C Housing has given the community and my, me personally, no confidence that it would be any different this time around, and the minister's recent comments that problems would be addressed is inconsistent with the track records of similar sites like Marguerite Ford. The neighborhood is thus truly fearful of the huge potential negative impacts of this project with good justification, and so I believe the proposal should be rejected in its current form. On the other hand, the community is highly supportive, and I personally am highly supportive of a building for low-income and at-risk families with children, for example. That said, the just-approved Broadway Plan should also reframe the discussion around the use of this precious land. As you know, the plan facilitates a large increase in density in the area but does not provide for green space, parks, to serve the high density of new residents. Since the land under discussion is a rare city-owned space in this high-density area, rather than completely pave and develop it, the city should take this opportunity to convert some of it to parkland so that all residents can benefit from this scarce resource. Finally, I would note that our neighborhood has already, quote, "taken one for the team." After several years of highly intrusive and loud construction are complete, we will be hosting one of Western Canada's busiest transit hubs in our community. The neighborhood has already taken one for the team, and thus it should not be asked to sacrifice itself yet again. So in summary, I urge surely council to reject this well-meaning but misguided proposal and consider a revised social housing offering that would have the support of the community, and ideally that would also include converting part of the space to a public park for all residents of Vancouver. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. There are no questions. Thank you for calling in. Uh, okay, we do have time for one more speaker, council, um, so we'll go, next on the list is speaker forty-six, uh, Nessa Finney.
Thank you very much, and I realize I am now between you and your bed. Um, I apologize if you hear noise in the background, it is rock breaking going on along Broadway in support of the Broadway Plan. Good evening, my name is Nessa Finney, I'm a longtime resident of Vancouver. I appear before council tonight not to speak in opposition of supportive housing, instead, I am speaking in support of truly supportive housing. My experience with the challenges of homelessness goes back to my university days, when I was on of the first volunteers at a newly opened women's shelter. I helped with the breakfast shift, where we made warm meals, prepared lunches to go, made shower facilities available, as well as clothing, before we closed our doors at nine AM and sent the women out onto the street into the very often cold Ottawa days. Not much has changed in the many intervening years for people experiencing homelessness and the supports that are available to them. I had listened to the proceedings so far with great interest. I had made it my responsibility to be fully informed about this rezoning application. I realize now that was not a laudable goal, it was impossible. I had the honor of being present for a small group meeting recently with Minister Eby and the CEO of B C Housing. I left the meeting discouraged by the lack of information specific to the proposed Arbutus site that was being offered by these learned and experienced leaders. It became apparent last night, listening to the vague, evasive, and elusive responses councillors were receiving and round one questioning, that I should not have been discouraged. I am in fact in excellent company, because apparently B C Housing and the minister don't want you to make an informed decision either. Council has asked informed and probing questions for which you were not given any direct answers. You received the same, almost verbatim, canned responses with many generalities and no specifics, which we had received in that disappointing small group meeting. I do not envy the decision you make you are being asked to make, nor the hours of speakers you have ahead of you. Dr Arden Sharma has identified four levels of listening. Level one, downloading, reconfirming old opinions and judgments. Level two, factual listening, with an open mind, you are noticing the differences between what you thought you knew and new data you are hearing. Level three, empathic listening, with an open heart, you're seeing through another's person's eyes with an emotional connection. And finally, level four, generative listening, with an open will connecting to an emerging future, suspending judgment, not preempting, classifying, nor dismissing what a person is expressing, noticing what you do not understand or what triggers questions for you, rather than what you do not like to hear about. It is that level of generative listening which leads to generative speaking, which is the framework offering a co-creative approach to transformative learning and innovation. I very much appreciated councillor Swanson, when you started your questions last night, acknowledging that you were listening with an open mind, level two. I invite you all within, with the two hundred-plus speakers that will follow me, that you're able to move to level four, listening with an open will to bring transformation and innovation. I have not heard any speakers expressing opposition to supportive housing. There needs to be specifics about this site, acknowledging that there is no other place in the province with these significant confluences, which have been highlighted over and over again, including the number ninety-nine bus loop, which translates boasts is the busiest bus route in North America. I'm asking you to oppose this application for rezoning and send it back for true consultation, where interested parties engage in generative listening and generative speaking. My greatest hope, when the revised application returns to council, is that you will have a single presentation made by two speakers standing side by side, not in fear, but as neighbors. One, a future resident of the building, and the other, a child from the adjacent school or playground, where the future resident implores you to improve, approve the reimagined building, where the resident shares with you their, their hope, their belief that they will get the support they need to flourish in their new home, and that the child will thank you for being courageous this week and insisting that B C Housing and the minister work with neighbors to create a building that will help us as a model for supportive housing then well. Thank you. I wish you all a restful night.
Uh, thank you very much. There are no questions, but we appreciate you coming, calling in to speak to, uh, council tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of, uh, of our allotted time, our scheduled time for tonight, so this meeting will be recessed now until June thirtieth at three PM, and we will start with, uh, the next speaker, which is speaker number forty-seven. And I'd just like to remind council, um, before we recess, that it is very important that you do not engage in any discussion or correspondence in regard to the remaining application. So, uh, with that, we are recessed.
Very well, chair.